Right now, we are on item number five on our agenda. This falls under reports by council and staff. And I apologize if I misspoke. We're under brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. That is item number four on the agenda. And that's just about a minute each for any council members that have these brief reports since we last met, which was two weeks ago on September 6th. And so would anyone like to begin with those brief reports? And Councilmember Way, your hand's up first, followed by Councilmember Willie.
Okay, I'll start very briefly. I think a lot of us went to the Cal Cities Annual Conference. I want to say two things that I learned at the conference about housing policies is we can really have creative but doable ways to accommodate housing in addition to building new housing. For example, two programs I learned from the conference is the lease to local locals programs that the city provides incentives for residents to lease their homes to people who are already working in their city. So I think that, you know, that's we're not building new homes. We're using homes that with empty rooms or, you know, empty couple places that we can accommodate people who are already working here. And the city actually provides incentives, means money, for residents to do that. I thought that would be a very good innovative program. And the other one is really a it's called ADU incentive. It has the same effect. It encouraged people to build ADU, but rented to people who work here for example, rented to teachers, rented to staff, rent to retail people. So that helps relieve housing crisis, but also it doesn't affect the neighborhood integrity. So just a couple of things that I think is a learning opportunity for us to really learn from other cities' policies and maybe we can, you know, implement it here if we think that fits into our culture. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And we have Councilmember Willie next.
Yeah, I want to start off with just a couple of words about the residents Rahul and Venkitt about the homeless lady, you know, on the sidewalk near Chuck E. Cheese. And I sincerely share the concern and, you know, to have a human being that has found really no other alternatives. I discuss this with the city manager each week on the 101, realizing that it's a brand new city manager that we've got and so trying to fill in some of the history. It is such a challenging task to figure out how best to help these people. Well, we did learn a lot from the homeless camp that was on Wolf Road and sharing that. And the city manager has assured me that they are actively working with both the sheriff and West Valley Community Services. And maybe she'll say more. The other one I'll just touch on, Monday night, the below market rate virtual workshop that the city had. I found it very interesting, but most importantly, it was very well put on to convey to the people out there, residents and non-residents, how the BRM housing program works. And it's really based on points. If you live in Cupertino, you get a point. If you work in Cupertino, you get a point. If you're a teacher, things like that, you get points. And that helps to prioritize the individuals that are necessary here. And so I'll leave it at that. The Bo Batino and other events, I'll let the other councilmen talk about those.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, hello, can you see me?
We can see you.
I don't see myself. Okay. Something is strange with the video. Okay, so yeah, on the 7th to 9th, I attended the Cal Cities Conference too and learned a lot. And then there are many vendors also offer tools for citizen engagement. And I think that that could be useful because we have been having a hard time reaching out to citizens since we don't have really have a legitimate newspaper. So there are right now digital tools to that can actually reach directly to residents is through various channels. And on the 17th, attended a Bo Batino. It's this year, it's I understand three or 400 people registered. It's an outdoor event. It's so successful. I talked to every booth. So it, yeah, I think especially one of them is a club offered by Cupertino High students who actually organize outdoor events for high schoolers. I hope that we can support this kind of programs because social isolation is the biggest issue right now among teens. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So I also went down to Long Beach, September 7th through 9th for the Cal Cities Conference. There were, there's a vendor room in a huge hall and just a huge array of different organizations were there. So some of the things I thought were kind of interesting, there was a golf course booth and happened to be the same golf course maintenance provider as Deep Cliff. They had some interesting suggestions. There was one that had that makes it was for regards to traffic. They make a solar powered way to light up a crosswalk at night, which I thought was kind of interesting because we have some dark areas and for pedestrian safety, it was pretty interesting. Bo Batino, this is the first time I've been to Bo Batino, not being a teenager. And I thought that the mental health booths that they had were exceptional and it was really, really well done. So hats off to council and Mayor Paul for working on this. I mean, staff, not council, for working on this. They did a great job. I did attend the Historical Society, the Cupertino Historical Society Jazz Age Theme Barbecue on September 9th. It was a costume party and in my opinion, this was probably the most fun event for at least the month or the fall. And I hope that so they do it again. It's for a great cause. That's it.
Thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. And so let's go, oh, for my own part, yes, Bo Batino was very successful this past weekend. And I also that morning on Saturday, went over to the Sunnyvale State of the City address by Larry Klein, Mayor Larry Klein in Sunnyvale. And yeah, a lot of good ideas, you know? I've decided to try to go to various states of the city addresses, you know, this year. So a lot of them take place here in the fall. Both San Jose and Campbell have theirs this Thursday, in fact. And I think the week before that, we had a couple of events. One was Dilly Hot in the Memorial Park. It was an Indian festival and it was very, very well attended. It was nice to, nice to see a good turnout by people. And so we had a few members of city council there as well. And I think later in the day, I want to say all five of us showed up at the Armenian Church, at St. Andrew Armenian Church for the Armenian Food Festival, which was brought back after a couple of years. And so thanks to Vice Mayor Chow for, you know, kind of pointing out the traffic considerations going across Bub Road. So that was nice to be able to keep those safety issues in mind. And a couple of Sheriff's Office deputies came out and made sure that people are okay going, going, going across that road. Actually, it's not Bub, it was Stelling. So that'll do it for the updates on council contacts. And we are on to item number five, which is report on committee assignments. Every December, we have committee assignments from council that are essentially representations by our city council on various committees throughout the region. And so if anyone would like to report on their formal committee assignments, please raise your hand on Zoom and we'll call you in order. So we have Councilmember Willie first. Councilmember Willie.
There was actually a left up hand. I was just noticing that.
Okay.
But I'm happy to go. So on the 14th was the monthly Silicon Valley Clean Energy meeting. I'm always wanting to point out, you know, power purchase agreements, get more renewable power supplied, less fossil fuel. And so we're now moving on another power purchase agreement. It's solar storage. So we're not doing solar cells with this power purchase agreement, but solar storage, get more when the sun is up and then discharge it when the demand is high in the evenings. 75 megawatts of storage capacity. The project is the Baldi solar project in San Bernardino. The board also came up with their strategic plan for 2023. The key points, grow their customer base. Not everybody in Cupertino or surrounding communities is buying their power from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Capitalize on the Inflation Reduction Act because it does have sections in there that Silicon Valley Clean Energy can take advantage of. Provide financing solutions for our lower income customers and be the customer of choice. And then lastly, still moving on the update to the new construction reach codes that hopefully all of us on the committee, all the communities will be achieving the updates to those reach codes. With that, that's it for today. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilmember Willie. And next, we have Councilmember Way.
So I want to report because Councilmember Moore and I are on the Historic Society Subcommittee and we all went to the Historic Society Museum Party and Councilmember just mentioned that. She, I want to compliment her because we all landed at San Jose Airport around six something. But when we were there, Councilmember Moore was in a fabulous costume. So compliment to you. And I would just want to say Historic Society and Museum really brings history back to Cupertino for education, for a lot of, you know, values in there. So I want, and then it brings future and past together. So I just want to give a shout out to the Historic Society and Museum.
Okay, just to clarify, we're on committee assignments. The next item is actually subcommittee assignments, if you wanted to report on that. So let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Hey, thank you. So let's see, on, oh goodness, let me get the date right. The LRC met on September 12th. And one thing I want to bring up is that it's been discussed in, is that Gonzales and son, they've cautioned over the record $300 billion surplus due to the funding requirement in the Constitution. This is our state budget surplus, which will result in a large growth in the K to 12 education budget due to Prop 98. The education budget will be guaranteed, but there may be a possibility of the surplus being nonexistent next year, resulting in a deficit by 2025. So keep an eye on that. The LRC of note for our local businesses is that we switched from a watch position on AB 2164 to a support position. And that provides some funding for ADA compliance support. Then on while at the, once again, I have to say, once again, the VTA PAC met during one of these conferences. So I needed to break away to chair the PAC on September 8th. There, we recommended that Santa Clara Valley, the VTA Board of Directors adopt the countywide local road safety plan. We also recommended that they adopt the 2023 Transit Service Plan, approve One Bay Area Grant Cycle Three list of projects. We, unfortunately, one of ours did not make it on the list. It didn't meet their criteria, so their criteria actually had some issues. And then we looked at the VTA's, it was informational item to look at VTA's effort to update its countywide long range transportation plan. And I will have, I'll be on the Audit Committee with Mayor this coming Monday, September 26th, if anyone would like to come join there. We have some terrific reports on there. And so it'd be great to have some more members of the public showing up. And we're trying to make the Audit Committee information more accessible to the public with more definitions provided when the reports come in and so that people aren't intimidated about all of those numbers. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll go with a very brief report. We had our VTA workshop, which, you know, comes in quarterly. This was effectively kind of a stub of a meeting to go over the budget as well as some downtown undergrounding, you know, issues with the bar extension. So a major project. I think it'll probably have a fairly profound impact on our area in the long term. So let's go on to item number six after we call on the Vice Mayor, whose hand is now up. Vice Mayor Chow, do you have committee reports between September 6th and today?
Yes, so on the 12th, the LRC meeting, we also discussed the bills that have passed the both houses. AB 2097 is a non-parking bill, so-called is passed. And then there is AB 2011 that would allow by right converging of commercial sites to housing. And the enactment date is July 1st, 2023. So that gives the city some time to look whether our existing ordinances might need to be updated. So we are recommending to bring study session to the council on bills that's passed this year. And on the 16th, we have the CEP meeting for the, the third community meeting for housing element will be on Monday, September 26th at 6:30. It will be virtual. The focus will be on senior homeowners with limited income and employees who work at Cupertino. And the committee recommended a possibility of having hybrid or in-person option for seniors who not only have tech, challenged with technology, who have no access to technology. So I'm not sure if that may be worked out. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Let's go on to item number six. This is our report on subcommittee assignments for the various subcommittees that council has formed. And would anyone like to go first on the subcommittee assignments reports? And I see the order of hands are Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, was that raised from before or would you like to?
Yeah, nothing to report.
Okay. And then let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So previously, I gave a pretty thorough report on the City Hall Subcommittee that I'm on with Councilmember Willie. We'll be meeting again this Thursday, just to let you know that it's still continuing, moving along. And I mentioned briefly earlier that the homelessness task force was supposed to have a meeting on September 13th and that it was canceled due to a lack of quorum. And that was not from, from the city Subcommittee members. That would be Mayor Paul and myself. So other individuals from the county, I'm going to assume, were unable to attend. And I'm truly bothered by that because it is such a large problem. And I would have liked to have seen better commitment from our surrounding cities. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Let's go on to Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so Farmers Market Subcommittee, I think, you know, has been a really a good success. But the thing to note is, you know, the Creeksite Park Farmers Market and the challenge that they currently have with the lack of parking due to the church. And, you know, can I ask that we include that to our Farmers Market Subcommittee? And I'll leave it at that.
I think we had already gone over this and that we decided that was within the scope of what we had formed the Subcommittee for. So if you wanted to go forward and I'm looking at the city attorney because I thought that dies.
Yeah, I think that the comment at the time was that there's certainly nothing preventing those two council members from meeting to discuss the, you know, you know, any farmers' market. So there's no Brown Act issue with that. So if they wanted to proceed with having that meeting, they could. If council wanted to provide formal direction, you know, especially to the extent that staff support is needed, you know, I would recommend an official.
Report out.
Appointment from council.
Right, exactly. So in this context, perhaps in a future meeting, well, certain definitively in a future meeting, they would say something like, we'd like to request a report out in the next meeting or something along those lines.
Right.
So, okay. And then, you know, also extend the invitation, if you have something before within that gap period, when you can put something on an agenda, just let us know. And then we can, we can, you know, presumptively put that specifically on an agenda outside of the Subcommittee report out. So, yeah, please, feel free just to reiterate that point. So, okay, no further Subcommittee reports at this time. Let's go on to item number seven. That is our city manager update. Pamela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spirit of keeping everything short, I will try to do my best to wrap up. So a big shout out to everyone who's attended at Bo Batino. Sounds like the council members had a great time. I also had a great time. Had I known that I can register and get a free Bo Bat, probably would have done it. But great shout out to staff who's done a fantastic job. As Acting Director Sander provided an update last time, this is really the answer for ongoing events leading us to the holiday season. So I want to remind all of you that there's a Bike Fest this Saturday and also on October 1st, there will be the Volunteer Fair. Also want to provide an update on recruitment. So staffs are currently working on closing up some key recruitment within the Finance Department and also working on opening up the recruitment for the Economic Development Committee. So there will be a lot more recruitment coming up. Along the line of the individual that's on Portal and Stevens Creek, I do want to make sure council and also the community understand that we've been working closely with the county's supportive housing, West Valley Community Services and Sheriff's Office. There's certain confidential information that we cannot release, but please rest assured that we're working on it. It does take time and we're really trying to work on an alternative that's in the best interest of the individual. So I do want to shout out to those of you, the residents who have shown extraordinary support and concern for this individual by writing to staff, to council members, and also by providing materials and good to the individual. It is difficult. It is unfortunate. We're really looking to see if there's a best alternative for and look for a pathway to a permanent housing for this individual. With that said, I also have some happy news. Public Works staff has been staffing booth at the Bo Batino shop for the Revitalized Memorial Park project. So for those of you who are interested, may participate in online survey and engage Cupertino.org through October 9th. And there will also be another pop-up booth at the Silicon Valley Day and Night Fun Fest this coming Saturday. More information on this event is available on the calendar section of City Cupertino website. With that said, I don't want to spill all of the beans. I know the Public Works Director, Matt Morley, also has a department update following me, so I'll leave that to him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Pamela. And that's a great segue into item number seven. Actually, that was item number seven. That's a great segue into item number eight, which is one of our department updates. And as we started a couple of meetings ago with IT and then we continued with the next last meeting for Parks and Rec, we are now, or Recreation Community Services, I should say, we're now at the Public Works Department and providing an update from that department. So would you like to introduce our director for that presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My pleasure to introduce you, Matt Morley, Director of Public Works. I believe, I'm not sure if Public Works is also the happy group like Rochelle has done, but I'm sure Matt has plenty of pleasant uses to share with you.
Great, thanks very much. Welcome, welcome, Director Morley.
Thank you. I think we're probably the building group, so maybe a good compliment to the folks at Parks and Rec. Thanks for having me tonight, Mayor and Council. I'll share my screen here and see if we can get going with the presentation. So I wanted to give you a quick update on our department. And the department is, I'll arrange my screens here, is made up of eight functional areas with 94 full-time equivalent employees. You see the functional divisions on the screen. We act as a partner to our other departments, supporting the delivery of their services in a lot that we do. As an example of this, our development services team who work behind the scenes to support the work of community development, utility companies and others in building infrastructure around the city. And I'll go through the other groups briefly through in the course of the presentation. As I was preparing this presentation, I realized that there's much that we do across each of the divisions and I hope to cover that in more detail in future presentations to the council as Public Works gets an opportunity. I'll start with our capital improvement program. Certainly, it's fun to build things. This slide emphasizes the template for work that we are doing in support of Memorial Park. So reviewing the slides on the screen, on the top left is the Ponds project that we're doing now that will ultimately, in very short order, result in usable park space. So that's a great project in progress for us. But we're not stopping there concurrently. As part of our CIP, we're looking at the future of Memorial Park. That includes park outreach that we did in front of the library in an association with Bo Batino this weekend. I was there and able to see a great amount of community engagement with that. So a good effort at getting the community to provide input on the project. And on the right side of the screen is a little bit of information that we put out. I wanted to emphasize that we've done a little bit of branding with this project to try and make the idea of Revitalize Memorial Park, something that recurs in people's mind and they see it and it resonates with them. And we hope to be able to continue this with other projects as we bring them forward and do some specific branding. We have other significant projects. As you know, we have an inclusive playground at Jolman Park that is moving along well in the design phase. We also have Lawrence Midi Park progressing in its early design phases. And we expect to have three preliminary design options ready for review in the next month or so on that, on that project. I know the council's anxious to see each of those and they are progressing. We're anxious to bring them to you. I did, I did not include images of some of our other capital work, including our pavement maintenance program. But as you know, we continue to maintain one of the highest pavement condition indexes or PCI's in the, in the Bay Area. And we have a project awarding soon on that as well, that will round out our projects, our pavement projects for the year. So continued strong efforts there. And then leading into the next slide, we have upgrades to the intersection of the Anza and Homestead that will upgrade the traffic signals. And that project is in progress and just waiting for some equipment so we can finish it and install there. So our CIP program reaches, reaches everywhere, reaches the parks, it reaches the streets, it reaches intersections. On the transportation side, our next division, you know, the VS Shuttle Program provides a great first last mile transit solution, continues to grow and you'll talk about that a little bit more on the agenda tonight. We also have a super busy Safe Rouse's School Program, especially this time of year where school's just getting off and we want to start off with a bang. And over the summer, we did a lot of infrastructure work to help facilitate that. One neat thing that we'll be doing is a pedestrian, pedestrian scramble at one of the intersections coming up soon. This will turn on all of the walk phases at once so that the pedestrians have priority at those intersections around schools. So we'll try that and see how that works and report out on that one. And of course, on the right side, you see the separated bikeways and you know those have become an icon in the city. And we're continuing to build on those as the projects come up. Also happening last weekend was National Creek Cleanup Day. Give a shout out to these images that include our, our future environmental stewards. We had a great group of scouts out this last weekend, so it was neat to see them out there. Although the council made great strides in cleaning up Saratoga previously at Lawrence, the new future Lawrence Midi Park site, there was still plenty of debris to bring out by this group. Some 400 pounds came out on Saturday. So another good effort to keep that space clean. This group is Environmental Programs Group is also responsible for our single-use plastic ordinance and our stormwater pollution prevention program as well as managing waste hauler contracts and monitoring the progress of those. And they do, in the course of their work, serious community engagement. On the operations side, these are the guys that are out there day to day in the streets making things happen. They tackle our maintenance in their parks, our streets, their intersections. They manage things behind the scenes in our fleet and with our facilities. In addition, they take on several projects that are budgeted specifically for small improvements that they can handle on a regular basis. And that's the idea of the median island work that you see on the left picture there. on a regular basis. And that's the idea of the median island work that you see on the left picture there. And of course, there's fun times. On the far right, you see us doing tree planting at Arbor Day, which was nice to do with a couple of the council members. And our guys get to get in there in their orange, orange sweatshirts and work with the kids directly, dig the holes and get the, get dirty with the kids planting the trees. So a fun effort that we get to do. And of course, there's lots of demand for our services. Just wanted to wrap up with a little plug for Cupertino 311 as a way to get information or make requests, not only of our department, but of other departments in the city. And with that, that concludes my report. And if I can get there, we'll stop sharing and turn it back to you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Director Morley. Yeah, we hope that it's an ongoing value add from the departments and we will very much look forward to the next iteration. I, I think we're basically talking essentially once a quarter or so for the department heads, as well as possibly Public Safety Sheriff's Office. So that might round out the six, since there are five departments, so.
Mr. Mayor, so you know, we're also bringing some other division within the city manager's office to your attention.
Oh, good.
Next council meeting will bring economic development to you for an overview of what Tina does.
I see. Interesting. Okay, sounds good. All right. Thanks, Madam City Manager, and thank you, Director Morley. All right, let's go on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is items nine through 17 tonight. And let us go to asking whether anyone from the city council is requesting that any of the items on consent be pulled. And I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Councilmember Moore, would you like to pull any of the items on consent?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I'd like to pull 14 and 16.
Okay, item 14 has to do with a state grant for an on-demand shuttle pilot program that we run. And 16 has to do with the Streetlight Transition Assessment Report. And so those two items are pulled. Are there any other council members that would like to pull an item? Let me go to members of the public as well. Jennifer, you have a hand up. Just checking in briefly, are you requesting that an item be pulled?
Yes, number 15, please.
Okay, very well. I will go ahead and pull that item. So may I please have a motion from council for items number nine through 13 and 17? And we're pulling 14, 15, and 16. Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up.
So moved.
And so will anyone like to, Councilmember Moore, second? And so just to clarify, Councilmember Wei, you're moving consent calendar as recommended in the agenda, correct? Okay, for nine through 13 and 17. And so Councilmember Moore, would you like to second that motion?
Moore, second.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, seeing no further hands, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on that motion for consent, items nine through 13 and 17, as written in the agenda recommendations.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we are on to item number 14. Once again, that's a consideration of accepting grant funding for the Via On Demand Shuttle Pilot Program and extending the contract with Nomad Transit LLP to operate Via Shuttle Pilot Program. And so let me hand this off to our city manager, Pamela. Would you like to introduce the item? Or perhaps somebody on staff who's on, or perhaps even somebody else from, I guess, Via possibly might be on for item number 14? I, I saw a name that I didn't quite recognize on, on Zoom associated with this. And so let me go a little bit out of order. Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Is there a point?
Yeah, I mean, normally you ask, what was the reason behind pulling it?
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Rather than getting a whole?
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. That's an excellent point. And thank you for reminding me of a, a good and best practice, I think. So Councilmember Moore, you pulled the item. Would you like to give a brief summary of the reason why you pulled it? So that they, so that that may direct some of the staff comments on this?
Oh, I think probably, super briefly would be that it's an $8.5 million project. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, sounds good. Well, let's just go ahead and bring it back over to our city manager. Pamela, did you want to say some words about the item and/or hand it off to staff?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thank you. We do have a presentation ready for this item. In particular, I think Councilmember Moore is looking for an overview of why we're expanding the contract and what will be involved. So if that's correct, I know Director Morley also has, and also Chris, has a presentation ready. It may take some slides to get through the overview, so please bear with, with us.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Well, welcome back, Director Morley, as well as Chris Correio from Public Works. And so why don't you guys take it away?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chris is the lead, obviously, with Via and you've talked with Chris Correio, Correio previously. I also wanted to introduce Michael Liu with the City of Santa Clara, who hopefully will be a partner with us. So that's the unfamiliar name for you. And we have Michael here to help support the item as well. And with that, we'll go through the presentation and I'll turn it straight to Chris.
One moment, please.
Very good. Thank you very much. And welcome, Michael from Santa Clara.
And to answer your question previously, Mr. Mayor, we do have two representatives online from Via and Michael Liu from City of Santa Clara. All right, can everyone hear me and see my screen? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'll go ahead and get started. So this evening, the item before you is an overview of the pilot program that the city's run with Via, as well as information on an expansion on a grant that was received by the city. In short, I won't read this slide, but this pilot has looked extremely different than we anticipated at the outset back in October 2019, obviously due to COVID. And that's reflected in the data that you'll see in the following slides. The information in front of you, that is the overall sort of high-level ridership data from the pilot program. One thing that I want to point out is that there was really sort of a golden period in this pilot where the system was performing at its most efficient, at its best. And that was from January 2020 to through March 2020. For those three months, the system performed really well. 10,000 trips were made out of the overall ridership shown on this slide during those three months alone. And then obviously on March 13th, 2020, the, when the county issued, issued shelter in place orders, the ridership plummeted. The utilization rate is essentially the rate of sharing that occurs. It's actually the rate, the number, total number of passengers per driver hour. So it's the closest metric we have to, to understand how much sharing is occurring on the system. And you can also see that around the same time period, that this sort of golden area, era that I referred to, so March, January, March, and April are the three highest bars on the left. I'm sorry, January, February, and March, where the utilization rate was at its highest. We hit almost 2.6, meaning that there were 2.6 passengers in the van in addition to the driver, which is what we wanted. And that was an average. On some days, we hit four and 4.5. And then, of course, after COVID, ridership plummeted, as did the utilization rate, until we made a decision to pause the service. And then you can see that the ridership and utilization has grown, reaching its highest for, since relaunching. In this last August, we hit 1.6 as the ridership is really coming back strongly now. Many council members over the years have asked about the, the cost per trip subsidy. And I haven't had this information in the past, so I decided to include it this time as Attachment D to give a month-by-month breakdown of the invoices for Via, for the service. And it's, it's very interesting. It, it, it follows the previous slide very closely. This period where we performed at our best, we had the lowest cost per trip on average. In February 2020, the cost per trip was $16.04. For comparison purposes, I know this is kind of hard to know what's good and what's bad. Via operates a service in Los Angeles and their cost per trip is about, was about $18.50. And then you can see here that our costs went way up during the pandemic, where we had essentially made a decision to keep operating because most of these rides, the, the fewer rides that were occurring were to essential destinations. And then after the 13-month pause, we had a relaunch and our cost per trip has been declining. And in August, where we had our strongest month of ridership since relaunching, we're now at about $38 per trip. And in September, just to, until today, we've done 1,500 rides. We did 2,000 in all of August, so that's showing us that we're, we're headed in the right direction in terms of ridership. We've done surveys at various stages of this pilot. And one thing that we've learned is that the, the system's used pretty broadly across various transportation use cases. We see commuters, healthcare visits, a number of different use cases. And we also have received really positive feedback from the community. These were comments made in the survey, in the previous survey of 150 individuals. In addition to these comments, anecdotally, we hear very positive feedback from mobility-limited riders in particular and others, that they, they love the service. The only criticisms we really have received through the pilot is that we don't have electric vehicles. We don't go to Mountain View Caltrain. We don't go to the airport. We don't go to, you know, set all of these lists of destinations we would love to go to. And we had not serviced those areas because they're quite expensive, or it would be quite expensive to do so. Fast forward to last spring, we had an opportunity to go after a grant called the TIRCP Grant. We came to council to provide an update on that and we were successful. So now transitioning, this gives us an opportunity to transition this program, to really end this pilot and consider a five-year grant, partially grant-funded program. So I'll take you through the recommended actions one by one tonight, so that you can understand more about the, the grant expansion that's proposed. So the first action is, recommended action is accepting the grant funds. What this really is, is an opportunity to signal the desire to continue this program. We're not really receiving any funds. That's not how this grant actually works. However, that is a formality that's, that's required. There will be, of course, a lot more detail to work out between the City of Santa Clara and Cupertino and also with Caltrans, who is administering this very large grant. This is a map of the expansion. Our current service for Via is in red here. And then the green zone would be the initial expansion area anticipated for launch in April 2023. Also, at that time, we would be adding the Mountain View Caltrain Station and El Camino Hospital. And then later in the grant, in, in much later years, I believe it's year four, potentially year five, we would expand into an additional area of Santa Clara. The next recommended action is extending the current contract, which expires in October, and adding $200,000 so that we can continue to operate our service until this grant-funded service begins later this, it, next year in, in the spring. Currently, the funds in this program would not last long enough for that to, to happen. And then the last recommended action is to approve a sole source contract with Via. And there are a number of reasons that we're, that we're recommending this or requesting this. The TIRCP application that we submitted was for an expansion of the existing Via Cupertino program. One of the key parts of that was the conversion into electric vehicles and to expand into larger geographies. The city's application scored very highly, in, especially in the area of project readiness. And for this particular source of grant funding, it comes from the state's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. Caltrans is looking to, and the state is looking to dispense funds quickly due to the urgency of climate change. And we're concerned that if we, if we do an RFP process, procurement process, what we would need to do is go back and amend our application and potentially put some of our funding, put this funding at risk. In addition to that, we have been meeting with other vendors throughout the course of the pilot program. And few other vendors exist that focus on this type of turnkey, on-demand micro-transit system. And finally, our municipal code allows council to make this determination if it sees fit. Okay. So as I mentioned, there was, there is still a lot of work to be done. We anticipate returning to council next year, early in the year, with a number of agreements, which we will need to work through with Caltrans, with the City of Santa Clara, with Via as well, or, and, and also we would return with a funding request. And then we would return to council, we anticipate on, on return to council prior to the launch with an update on, on that progress. And according to the grant application, we were currently scheduled for an April 2023 launch. And that completes the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. And let us go to any members of the public that have any comment on this item number 14 before we turn this back to council. And I see one member of the public with a hands raised, with a hand raised, that's Jennifer. And so welcome, Jennifer, to the other members of the public. Please have your hand raised by the time Jennifer gets done speaking. And actually, Jennifer's hand is now down. And so I take that to mean that there are now no members of the public. But I will check in with our city clerk, Kirsten. Are there any members of the public that have submitted a blue card? And then after we take this back to council, we'll wait a few minutes and see if anyone emails cityclerk@cupidino.org as well.
No, Mayor.
Okay. So let's go ahead and bring this back to council and I'll just check in in a few minutes with regard to the email side of things. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. And Councilmember Moore will be?
Yes.
Yeah, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
All right. All right. Thank you, Chris, for that report. And again, congratulations for getting that grant. That's, that's amazing. I'm wondering about looking at that map, perhaps if you could show it again. There, I believe there was some mention also about expanding into West San Jose. But I think there was some mention of the airport. And I'm curious, when I look at this map, what would it take to get Via to cover the airport? And then, and then I'm wondering, if you did cover the airport with the, with the amount that Via is charging, being so reasonable, I think that that would, if that could ever happen, that would be an interesting alternative. And is that something that you thought about? That's first question. Well, actually, two questions. I'd like to know about the West San Jose possibility. And I guess the third would be, if we find that Apple, since they're having their employees come back in and they've got their own shuttle system, which the residents don't get to use, but if we're heavily subsidizing our system and we find that there are a significant number of Apple employees, have you considered working something out with Apple so that they're helping with this, this program? If that would make sense. So those three. Thank you.
By one. I, we have been in conversation with San Jose. Actually, San Jose, the city of San Jose was interested in joining in on this application, but didn't have enough time to really get the documents together in time for the deadline. However, Cal S T A, the grantor, has told us that they're very interested in in San Jose applying in this next round, which opens up this fall. So we're working with them, Via is also working with them on preparing an application. So we're hopeful that we can get a chunk of West San Jose included, and and they're working through the mapping right now to see what that might look like. I believe they're interested in something that extends as far east as the Santa Clara portion, at least near Valley Fair, which would be great for Cupertino residents. To get to your, answer your second question, the airport, we had discussions about the airport. Via had some concerns about airport trips overtaxing the system. So as an alternative, what what was included here is the Santa Clara train station, the Caltrain station has a VTA bus that connects to the airport. It's really like a shuttle from that station. And so by including that for a very low fare, you could take Via to that station and then the shuttle into the airport. So that was sort of a workaround. And then that way, we we don't, it's it's just inconvenient enough that the, we're not really competing with Lyft and Uber, which is what we, we don't want to be in that business. And then the third question, we we meet monthly with Apple on transportation issues. And we're, we are wrapping up a list of projects through the ten million dollar Apple donation. And Apple has brought up that, you know, that we are nearing the end of that, and they're interested in discussing the next round of projects, and this is definitely top of mind. For me at least, to try to get some sort of contribution. In terms of the riders, we do have data that shows us that Apple employees are using the service a lot. So I don't know if there's another way to to do that in terms of like different fares, like a corporate fare, that kind of thing, but it is something that's definitely top of mind.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks very much. And next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you. Yeah, it's amazing that we got this grant. I do wonder, it's from this map, it seems Sunnyvale is a more natural expansion area, so are are they also interested, since we are already going to their Caltrans station?
Unfortunately, they're not yet. But, but they, they, when they, when they saw the press release, I got a, I got a call that they are interested in having initial conversations about the future, but they're, they're a little bit further behind. San Jose right now.
That's awesome. I do wonder, since this is a fifty percent match, and then it seems to be reimbursement-based, so does that mean the city, by accepting this grant, the city effectively is commit committing to eight million or eight hundred point five million dollars for the next five years?
So in in some ways, in some ways, yes, because although the city wouldn't be committed for, let's say, for some reason, if if the grant, if the grantor didn't provide the funds, we could, there's nothing stopping the city from ending the program. We just wouldn't get additional grant funds. But the city will need to allocate enough funds to make payments every month before receiving reimbursements from the grantor. I have, if you're interested.
Cover the cost before we are reimbursed.
So the city will be in a position to pay monthly costs, Cupertino's not Santa Clara's, monthly costs. And then we submit a report every month to Caltrans, and then we'll receive reimbursements. If if it's helpful, I have a slide that shows the five-year annual costs that are anticipated.
It's more of a cash flow question, so
Okay.
Because because there's a month or two lag before we get a check from Caltrans, we'll cover those costs in a, through our budget and then be reimbursed for it, so that money will be back in our budget.
Yeah, that's okay. And and no need to show the slide. So I, I guess in the next budget, we will be including this in the budget.
That is correct.
Okay, great. And yeah, definitely think we should reach out to the larger employers, not only Apple, Kaiser, and a lot of other large companies in Santa Clara. And they all probably will be interested in chipping in. Yeah, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just want to clarify a couple of questions that I asked the staff, I want to share with everyone. You know, rights and riders are different, so I was curious of how many riders that Via service served. For example, one rider could ride five per week, that's considered five rides. So the answer was about fifteen hundred riders, so I thought that was a pretty good number to share. The second one is the eight million, four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars grant is split between Santa Clara and Cupertino. Our five years expense about fifty percent of it. But to have a ten-year contract but not committed to the last five years actually has the advantage of we are able to get another grant or, you know, ready, these are ready projects that can get transportation grants or clean energy grants, especially if the fleet is going to be electric, and also attract Sunnyvale or other cities to join us if there are grant availability for either transportation, clean energy, so I think this would be a very good place for staff to pay attention to where federal and state have money available. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Wei. And well, let's go ahead and take a, take a motion at this time. I want to thank, you know, Chris and Public Works for your really good efforts here, and it was, it was a pleasure to be able to socialize this with Santa Clara city council members, and, you know, they delivered on, you know, their support for our application. And so I did, you know, I think I'd be a little bit remiss if I didn't mention that I did receive an email from a, from a member of the public who is associated with a transit private company down in Los Angeles, it was called Circuit. And so I think, Chris, you have detailed the, you know, reasons for doing a single-source, you know, process here. But did you have anything, you know, for this particular entity? A couple of the points that he made was, you know, they seem to be, you know, pretty far along in the electric, you know, kind of vehicle option, together with the the kind of W two employee with benefits. So those are the points that were made. Did you want to speak to that at all? Because I just, I just feel like it's, you know, important to kind of hash out that particular issue of, you know, foregoing an RFP process.
I met with with Circuit in person, and they're, they're a great startup company. They, they, the challenge with with their product offering for us is that they tend to offer these neighborhood-scale electric vehicles that are very small, and I don't think most riders would feel safe in in Cupertino because our streets have higher speeds, they're more appropriate for like a gas-lamp district in San Diego kind of thing. And and I don't think it would be, you know, a vendor that we could consider for this scale of appropriate.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you, you know, addressing that full-on, and I think that, you know, it's, it's nice to look at a proven product that we've worked with for, I guess now if you include the gap period, a few years. And so to be able to have that application that was premised upon, you know, this particular vendor, you know, I think it bodes well. Hopefully, some existence of a competitive environment is always a positive thing. And so, you know, having the somewhat larger vehicle, hopefully that spurs on, you know, the development. I'm always trying to encourage our our local transportation agency on the county level to kind of think about the electrification in a faster timetable as well. But if we're to, for instance, kind of look at socializing the use of public transit, Via is certainly, you know, a really great way of going about it in Cupertino and in the West Valley. And, you know, I recall the last meeting that we had at VTA, I was specifically saying, you know, for, you know, this, it's really a matter of all hands on deck and all the interoperable parts. If we are not able to deliver micro-transit solutions necessarily in as extensive a manner as we could be doing in VTA, you know, we might as well try to interrelate with our local agencies. So it's, so it's nice to be able to see this delivered, and being able to get to San Jose International, that 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 would be tremendous, and I was really quite pleased by your suggestion of going to the Santa Clara Transit Center. That that makes a lot of sense, actually. I've taken that sixty buses, and it it arrives quite frequently. So should be a fairly convenient way to get over to San Jose International, unlike trying to take, you know, the the buses all the way there from, you know, Cupertino at the moment. So, all right, so I, you know, let me go ahead and entertain a motion. I do see two further hands raised from Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore. And I would like to ask to see if anybody would like to bring forward that motion. We can have further discussion now, once it's on the table. And so Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to move the recommended action on the agenda at this time?
Happy, so moved.
Okay, and Councilmember Moore, would you like to second that?
Sure, I second that. And I'd like to ask, Chris, am I, am I understanding this correctly? We would expect the program launch into Santa Clara April of twenty twenty-three? So ribbon-cutting with Santa Clara and Cupertino together, that's, that's, yes, all right.
And a splashy new name, but I will come back to to discuss the, that's the more fun part.
Oh, sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
Wonderful. That's excellent. That's a very festive. What's a word retrieval problem here, the festive suggestion? Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a follow-on comment at this point?
Yeah, and I think we should take this chance to do further outreach for Via. Many people still don't know about it. For example, we could have talked about it at Bobatino and all the events. We should have a banner like the Bike Fest over Stevens Creek or at the banner at the corner of Memorial Park. I think the, I hope state staff have a better plan for an advertisement. This is really a great program. And more ridership would reduce the cost. So, yeah, more people need to know. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And so let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on this agenda item motion. Madam City Clerk.
Council, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. And so we will go on to item number fifteen on our consent calendar. Item number fifteen has to do with providing a statement of city council support and considering, considering that for the I two eighty Wolf Road interchange project and authorizing the appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund capital reserves as a ten percent non-measure B local match for the I two eighty Wolf Road interchange improvements project. And so that was actually polled by a member of the public, and so I will go to that member of the public to provide a brief summary as to the reason for pulling the item. And so, Jennifer, we're going to go ahead and unmute your microphone, and if you could just provide an encapsulated reason within a minute or so, that could help direct our staff to provide this initial presentation on this item number fifteen.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, welcome back.
Okay, sorry. Yes, this item, I'm certainly, I have followed the, I've gone to all the meetings, kept up with the interchange, the Wolf Road two eighty interchange date. It's been a little while since we had visited this, and I just wanted to, I had a question about what exactly is this? Okay, if we're taking eight hundred million from, I'm sorry, eight hundred thousand from the general fund, what exactly is this matching ten percent, twenty percent? I don't understand what that is exactly, because I've never seen anything like this on here. The other thing is, I had the question is, we're going to have to refresh my memory here because I thought we were doing this because of the Apple Two campus implementation. Apple Two campus has been here now about, what, six years, since it was built, seven? And what, how does this involve the Valco buildout? The potential for Hamptons, and now we've got potential, if the housing element goes through at Valco Cupertino Village with the rebuilding, with the big housing unit at the end of town, and the Hamptons, of course, where are we sitting with this being a viable upgrade to this interchange? I, I'm a little bit confused about why this item came back, where we are in the implementation of it. I, it seemed to be, I, I think everybody was pretty happy with the plans for the implementation. But now that we've had the Valco situation happen, I just thought this upgrade was generated by the Apple Two campus buildout, but how does Valco fit into this? How does the potential buildout of Valco Cupertino Village, and what, what about the hotel situation at Cupertino Village? Is that still viable? This may affect the two eighty interchange. Could you explain what this is? Are we making a bond for the public with this eight hundred thousand? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Let's go ahead and bring this to staff, and I think that's a reasonable guidance as to the information sought on this item number fifteen. Pamela, would you like to introduce this item or introduce a staff member who can speak to these?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll actually defer it to Director Morley to provide more detailed summary.
Great, thanks, Pamela. Welcome back, Matt.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think this is a funding question and a project status question, so I'll just go over it briefly. So this project's being done in, as many Caltrans projects are in phases. This particular phase, we're trying to get to the sort of next big step, and that involves getting the project construction ready. As we are going through the process, there's identified additional utility relocation costs that were unidentified early on in the project to the tune of eight million dollars. Measure B is covering a good portion of those, of that, up to leaving behind our our ten percent match, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's why that that number is important for us. And that gets this project to to a design completion ready for construction. We'll point out that we are looking for lots of additional dollars associated with this project in partnership with with VTA. And so hopefully, there are, for example, SB one funds that will supplant this, and these, this eight hundred thousand dollars will not actually be an expenditure to us. We are actually meeting with VTA now and working on our SB one application sort of as we speak. So that's sort of the the dollars specific to this recommendation. With respect to the project and additional funding, there's lots of funding that comes into play with this one, including development fees for for neighboring projects. There's still projects that may develop in the future that would contribute through the development agreement and projects that have developed already that contributed to this project. So lots of, lots of funding that goes into the pot to make this one successful in the long run for for what is a very big overcrossing of of two eighty. So with that, I'll stop there. Hopefully, that answered your questions and will be happy to follow up on others.
Great, well, thank you very much, Director Morley. Let me go at this point to members of the public. They have comments on this presentation of information on this item number fifteen before we go to council. Councilmember Moore, I see that your hand is raised, so we'll go ahead and go to you first with regard to council, but I see that a member of the public still has a hand raised, that's Jennifer again, and so I'll let everyone know. Please have your hand raised by the time that Jennifer's done speaking and the public comment here, excuse me, in order to be recognized to speak on this item number fifteen. So Jennifer, you'll have three minutes, and welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Morley for explaining. I understand things, good things work slowly, especially with Caltrans. I just, I'm glad that you mentioned the other projects that may Um, I just, I'm glad that you mentioned the other projects that may be coming down the pipe because I don't, if I remember correctly, I really think that it was, was Apple, the Apple campus build that generated the potential for the over crossing change and upgrade. I don't think Valco was a fact. Now, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's been a long time. I do not think Valco was the generating factor of this build out upgrade change. I think it was the, one of the conditions of the building of the Apple II campus because of the supposed increase in amount of people, um, working there. And you can see this was way before pandemic. But if you could bring me up to date on that and then are you looking down the road at potential build outs at Cupertino Village, especially if we're putting in 500 to 1,000 housing units in there? Um, this may impact, uh, this intersection. And also Apple now has ordered people back to campus, but you, you've got some issues. What about Valco? How does that affect it? So thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Let's go back to our council members. Councilmember Moore?
Hey, well, I appreciate the question, um, questions from, from Jennifer about this project. Uh, I was concerned about the Valco impact as well. Um, and in this report, we're seeing that there's funding coming from the Hyatt Hotel developer and from Apple, but I'm not seeing any contribution from Valco. And, and I believe they were, um, challenging, uh, some fees required, uh, um, for this area. And I'd, I'd like to hear about that. What, what is their contribution? Because, uh, they're going to be having a significant impact with, you know, several thousand commuters, um, for their office park that they're building. Um, so what were the calculations to design this interchange, um, taking the current SB 35 project, um, into account? And understanding that they also changed their parking supply by, um, over 2,000 spaces? So they have, uh, they, they decreased the number of parking spaces in their most recent plan by over 2,000. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that if they did design with Valco in mind, that it's changed now, um, so that they need a TDM plan in order to make their project work. Um, so what, what is that going to do to this, to this, uh, design? And I remember they had like a diverging diamond and just a simple, let's, let's just make everything wider on the, the off ramps and on ramps. And they pretty much, the, the idea was that it was going to be too complicated to get the residents to do the divergent diamond and that we'd have trouble with it basically? And then just go with a more conventional, um, plan? So I wish in, in the report that we saw what the actual, um, suggested plan diagram is. So anyway, going back to the Valco project, um, project, if, if I could hear some information about that, that'd be great.
Thanks, Councilmember Moore. And, um, really good memory, by the way. Um, yeah, I had very similar questions with regard to the data as well as the design. And, uh, you know, being the only one on the dice, I was actually here when we were going through those designs, um, the, the diamond configuration really bring, uh, some memories there. And I know that we looked at cloverleaf and partial cloverleaf as well. Um, but maybe, maybe David wouldn't know with specificity what was actually designed out. I know, you know, Director Morley, um, probably has read up on this and, and gotten, uh, some specifics. But with regard to the assumptions, you know, really, really good point. You know, let's try to find out what the data is. Um, and, uh, why don't we bring it back over to staff to answer those questions?
I'll start us off just briefly, um, with, and sort of cue David up for, for the future response. Uh, the tough, tough question on Valco is they may pay some traffic impact fees, but I think ultimately SB 35 restricts what we can, uh, what we can get from that as a contributor. Uh, good news is I think we have our eyes on other sources that will fund the $120 million project. So ultimate positive outcome in getting the, the project fully designed. Um, and then I'll let David talk about, uh, the design of the project. I know there is lots of design work done. We're getting to the end of design, so we'll be able to bring you back, um, the, the, the design that goes out to, to, to construction. So you'll be able to see what it looks like as a finished product. That'll be a nice, uh, a nice milestone for us. Uh, but Davis can tell us about the, the, the design assumptions that were made in terms of sizing of the, of the interchange.
But just before, I'm sorry, Director Morley, just before you do that and transfer David, you made an allusion to the $120 million price tag on this. Um, and I, I appreciate that. But I want to be clear about it. Um, 95 million is accounted for, right? The potential gap is 25 million that we're kind of, you know, kind of trying to figure out in the future where that would come from, correct?
Yeah. Perfect point. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, great. I'll, I'll take that as that being correct. Um, so, uh, David, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. David Stillman, Transportation Manager. Um, going back to address, um, a couple of the questions, um, from Jennifer about the catalyst for the project. This was a project that was initiated by VTA, um, and sponsored by the city, uh, for several reasons. Um, the, the additional traffic imposed by Apple, uh, being one of them. But this is a structure that is nearing the end of its useful life and would need replacement, um, regardless of traffic within the next 10 or 15 years. Um, it's also out of standard, uh, in, in several respects and it's, uh, very uncomfortable to walk or bike across for, for those of you who have tried that. And so in terms of, uh, wanting a multimodal, um, transportation feature in the city, um, this, this interchange, uh, very much needed to be upgraded in order to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians with a level of, of safety and comfort. So there's, there's a lot of reasons for, uh, this project, uh, to happen. Um, it does consider traffic from future Valco development as well as Apple traffic, as well as other, other development in the area. Um, there were several configurations of the interchange that were looked at in the initial stages. Um, as you mentioned, Mayor, a, um, a, a diamond interchange and traffic analysis was done, a pretty detailed traffic analysis on, on a tight diamond, on a diverging diamond, on the partial cloverleaf. And what was found was that the, the partial cloverleaf configuration, which is what's there now, um, was the, the most efficient and had the least traffic impacts of all of the configurations. So as a result, it was the partial cloverleaf design that won and, uh, is in the process of being designed, nearing 100% design at this point. Um, there will be some changes to the geometrics from what you've, uh, you know, what we have out there currently. Uh, there'll be three lanes each direction over the freeway instead of two. Um, there'll be, uh, more standard grades all around, uh, tighter turns to enter the freeway in order to avoid the high speed entrances so that bicyclists and pedestrians can cross safer. So a lot of, um, good geometric changes are going to happen to make it, um, a safer facility than it currently is.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, David. And so, uh, and thanks, uh, Director Morley. Uh, Councilmember Moore, your hand's still up, but let me go on to Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow, uh, to weigh in with, uh, questions or comments at this time. And, uh, if your hand's still raised, we'll, we'll go back to you after that. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So, um, as we're reading the reports, I think it's very clear that the funding, um, is $25 million short and, but, um, there's a possibility of applying for the SB one local partnership competitive programs. And, um, since Valco, the RISE project is, uh, being mentioned, I wonder, I, cause I don't quite remember the amount, what is the traffic impact fee that the Valco, uh, the RISE will contribute to the city?
This might be a city attorney question, um, but, uh, I'm not sure if that's something that...
Uh, so, um, you know, that's been estimated at several times. It's, you know, certainly something that's still a subject of discussion. Um, I could certainly follow up with the council, um, outside of the, um, the meeting, given that this is, that's not really agendized tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, just that we are, that will come to the city, right? So if, if we would have to, um, pitching some money, we would have some funding available?
Uh, the transportation impact fee goes to, to fund, uh, uh, projects in our, our capital improvement program and, 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 uh, Director Morley can provide details if you have more questions about how that works.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I'm curious to the traffic study too, because I remember this was, initially it was estimated that we need one extra lane just for Apple. And now we have a much bigger Valco project. I'm glad to hear that the analysis is done, is done with the future Valco project in mind. But if the staff can forward the traffic analysis, appoint me to an online source with that analysis, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And before we go back to Councilmember Moore, uh, let me ask my question briefly. Um, I, I think I know the answer to this. I think it's no. But was, was purple pipe wrapped into this at all? Or was that just separate infrastructure that we would have been working on, you know, apart from this project? Anyone?
Yeah. I don't believe that there's any purple pipe in this particular project. It's very specific to existing utilities that are already there.
Right. Yeah, I know that, um, I think, I think the Hamptons Irvine Company was supposed to help bring it down to, uh, 280 and then perhaps the Valco project. But, but given that this is the infrastructure, right? I mean, we would be, you know, dealing with this, uh, this, this stretch of things. I mean, does anyone have a specific recollection of what that status was? Or am I, am I just remembering something that, that wasn't affiliated with this particular Okay, I'm gonna take that silence as a, you know, TBD.
As staff, as staff, we can follow up and, and certainly, um, let the council know what the status is.
Okay. Well, I see your, okay. I, I see Chad turned his camera on, but he's nodding. So, uh, yeah, let, let's just get a, a follow on status. I know the status of purple pipe was a little bit, right? I mean, they were supposed to be watering some of the Apple, you know, kind of, um, grounds for that. But, uh, so, some of the, uh, water turned out to be a little bit too, um, impure, I guess, to, you know, uh, use for that type of purpose. But, uh, any event, let's go back to Councilmember Moore. You still have your hands, hand raised before we take a, a motion. Um, although, you know, for the purposes of, um, you know, the discussion, because the discussion can continue, um, would you be willing to bring forward, uh, the motion as recommended by the staff on the agenda, Councilmember Moore?
Uh, yes. Um, sure. Um, I move the, the recommended action.
Great. I'll go ahead and second it so that we can get to your follow up comment.
Okay. So, um, so the developer has protested the fees, the Valco developers protested the fees. So when I, when I look at this, this agenda item, I, I see a lot of taxpayer dollars which are getting directed towards it, right? And, and the developer is getting, uh, huge benefit off of, off of us, um, to build a project, uh, using a housing law, which is worsening the housing shortage and putting thousands of commuters on the road. And they need to have this interchange improved in order to accommodate that. So, um, I, I, I think we should, we should all look at that and, and, and have a problem with it. So, all right. So I did, I did make the motion, but I want to make sure that that is understood, what, what's happening here, um, and, and to us. Because, uh, they chose to use SB 35, we don't have the mitigations, uh, there's no discussion. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised?
I'm not sure if this is, I have to ask Chris if this is a question that can be asked because we're talking about this and not the RISE or developers. Um, so I think I'm not gonna ask my question.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I would recommend steering the discussion back towards this project. Thank you, Councilmember Wei.
Okay, great. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and, um, ask for any further comments at this point. Uh, but if there are none, I'll, uh, just go ahead and, um, you know, uh, indicate that, uh, it, it seems like we're talking about $800,000 to secure the 7.2 million as the rest of the, you know, uh, percentages to bring us up to the 100%. Um, there does seem to be some opportunity in the future to draw upon other funds. And so, um, you know, I, I, I hear what people are saying with regard to, uh, the rest of the, um, uh, the rest of the surrounding considerations, which, you know, is one of the reasons I brought up the, the purple pipe issue because, you know, that's infrastructure and it's recycled water. People have those concerns, certainly with the, with regard to that resource. So a, as to the rest, um, you know, I realize that we're talking about one particular interchange, but, you know, it's all part of a transit and traffic equation. Um, you know, personally, I'd love to see us to, um, you know, consider the fact that, uh, you know, we, we do have a lot of transit needs in the area and, um, a, a long, long delayed, uh, plan that hasn't been built out, uh, in, in Santa Clara County. So, um, it's something to think about. Uh, and I know this is probably going a little bit of field, uh, but it is over this interchange that was, that was suggested. And so a number of years ago, when I first got into council, there was a former council member in Montessorino who came to me and he had this whole idea of a transit center over 280, right, right where we were talking about it, in fact. And, uh, it was pretty interesting, actually, you know, to, to think about interconnecting with, with transit down the median of 280, which some people have actually suggested from our council before. Uh, but any event, um, let's go ahead and bring this back to Vice Mayor Chow, then Councilmember Willie. But actually, Vice Mayor Chow, before we go to you, let me go to Councilmember Willie because he hasn't spoken on this item yet. And then, uh, Vice Mayor Chow.
See, a little bit of a stretch, but, you know, um, maybe Matt could tell us what he foresees in terms of a timeframe for this project. I mean, it'd be nice for us to kind of know what we're, what we're, uh, considering.
Yeah, great, great informational question. Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Um, so Director Morley, uh, any, any sense of the timetable on what we're looking at here?
I think I'll, I'll look to David to help me with the times, timetable on this one.
Okay, great.
Sure, sure. Yeah, they're looking to have construction documents finished spring of next year, go out to bid, um, shortly thereafter, start construction fall of next year and about a three-year construction schedule.
Great. Um, okay, so let's go to, uh, Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, yeah, thank you. I think this project has taken a while, ever since Apple Park was approved, that this was being discussed. Uh, it's great to see that it's finally moving forward. But I'm curious, this $25 million shortfall that we still have, are they going to wait until, are they going to wait? Or are we going to wait until we have the funding for this to proceed? And, and are we going to just proceed? But if we proceed and we couldn't get another source of, of funding, then the city then is committing $25 million into this project, right?
So, um, we currently, as I had mentioned, we're applying for SB one funds and we're, we're hopeful that we'll be successful there. It's a partnership project, so that's a, a positive for us. Um, but we won't know until the scoring is out for SB one. That would be the construction dollars that we need to, to continue the project. Uh, if, um, if we're not successful for, for SB one, there may be other grant funding opportunities in the future that we could pursue, but it, it would likely mean a delay in the project in order to follow, uh, to, to pursue them. So we would have that conversation at that time with council to understand what your preferences would be.
SB one is only five, uh, eight million dollars, right?
No, SB one dollars would be twenty, uh, twenty, full 25 million.
Or get full 25 million. But if we don't get that, we will then be thinking about, do we proceed or not?
We'll continue to turn over rocks to look for additional, additional funding. Uh, but yeah, we may have to come back, um, if we're not successful to council and have that discussion.
Hmm, okay. I do, yeah, okay. I do remember back in 2016, Valco committed a $30 million donation for discretionary project because they want the council's approval, uh, for a streamlined SB 35 project. They don't have to provide anything. Yeah. Well, so the citizens will have to try to come up with something. So thank you, the staff, for, uh, your continued effort to look, look for funding. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And then, uh, Councilmember Willie, you still have your hand raised? Is that from before? Okay. And I see, uh, Councilmember Moore has her hand raised once again. So let me, before we go to Councilmember Moore, uh, put myself into the queue here. So, um, with regard to... So with regard to the basic question that Vice Mayor Chow had, are we on the hook for the $25 million? You know, definitively, we're not, right? I mean, if, if the project doesn't, you know, go forward. So that's good to know. I saw your head shaking, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Director Morley. And so, you know, feel free to turn on your mic and correct me if I'm wrong there. But the other question I had, and I don't remember this in the design, and thank you, David, for reminding us that it was the partial cloverleaf that was selected. In terms of the walkability, right, the pedestrian and the bike aspects of it, those were covered, right? Those were covered in the design. I mean, I know you indicated there was a, you know, kind of a sharper turn to kind of slow down the traffic. But where I'm going with this is also thinking about the 280 trail, which Councilmember Moore helped rename essentially, right? So is there that interconnectivity? Can you remind us on the southern side of this interchange, whether that's contemplated as well as part of this project?
Yes, it is. There'll be a connection from the interchange down to Perimeter Road and to the 280 trail.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, and so hopefully, you know, you'll have last word before we vote on this, on this item that's on the, on the table.
Hey, thank you Mayor Paul. With regards to the transportation impact fee, and I think this is a question for, for Chris, there is, there is a transportation impact fee from Valco. Would you happen to have a ballpark figure on that amount?
Councilmember, I think that question was actually asked by Councilmember Way, and our city attorney stated that he'll essentially get back to her.
Because I was recalling something in the $36 million range, so, yeah, okay.
Okay.
It isn't that we get, it isn't that we get nothing. Yeah, and that was, that was the bait. They didn't, they were not happy with the fee and they were trying to reduce it.
I will go ahead and-
Thirty million on top of that mandatory amount. That's my point. Thirty million donation on top of-
Vice Mayor Chow, let me, yeah, Vice Mayor Chow, let me refer this to our city attorney. I'll let you have the last word on this if you wanted to, you know, say anything or reiterate anything that you had stated previously.
Yeah, so I will follow up with, with council in, in writing after the meeting.
Okay, very good. Lot of night and lot of interesting, you know, requirements and needs out there. So let's go ahead and vote on this item, item number 15. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct that roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Let's go on to item number 16 now. And we are considering the streetlight transition assessment report. I'm assuming that this is also public works, but let's go to Councilmember Moore who pulled this item. Councilmember Moore, would you like to provide a very brief, you know, some directional language as to how to guide us on this staff report?
Well, I can, I can get, get right to the point. I would actually want to continue this particular item and have a, perhaps some site locations in the city of certain streetlights so that we can see what the lumens are that they're referring to, so we know what, what they are like. The street classification for the LED lumens that we have in this report, residential at 3,000, collector 4,000 to 5,000, and arterial 8,000 to 9,000. And I have some recollection that we were looking for something like 1,700 in our, in our dark skies ordinance. So I personally won't agree to these LED lumens without having some sense of what they actually look like before we agree to them. So, and for that reason, I, I, I want it pulled, and I'm also getting to the point where I would want it continued, where we have some more information coming back to us, like we had when we had the ordinance come through before. We had some photographs, and if we could actually have some locations in the city where we, where we see what this brightness looks like. I think that that would help us make a more informed decision. And I know that might be difficult to, to sort out, you know, what's an eight to nine thousand dollar, not, not dollar, but lumens range? What's, what's around 3,000? What does that look like before, before we agree to it? And I think also that the, perhaps, we had, we had a lot of Audubon members speaking. They, I don't know if they've weighed in on this particular item or caught it. I would like to hear what they have to say about it as well. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Moore. Let me, let me try to connect this to the recommended action. So there is a recommended action of accepting the streetlight transition assessment report. There is also a report that's part of our agenda packet. Are you suggesting that we defer the acceptance or the consideration of the acceptance of the streetlight transition assessment report until there can be follow-up with regard to what you were describing? And from what I can glean of it, you're wanting more illustrative, I guess, examples of what is being discussed here?
Yes, yes, Mayor Paul, that, that's exactly right. And I'd like to hear, once we have that information, I'd like to hear from members of the Audubon Society, make sure that they've had a chance to weigh in as well.
Well, let's, let's go to staff on this. I, I guess that's, you know, fairly, fairly clear direction and, you know, kind of a request. Madam City Manager, did you want to speak to this before we proceed further on it?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to clarify that the action before council tonight is to accept a report. So if we were gonna go back to the vendor to prepare additional analysis, I would have to talk to Director Morley to see how that can be done. So we're not asking for any direction from council, but simply just to receive the report. You could also receive the report to say this could have other analysis to be included.
Right. Is there a time sensitivity to accepting the report here?
I would defer that to the city attorney.
This is purely informational. This is, I mean, so council has adopted an ordinance and staff is implementing it. If, if, if council wishes to provide additional policy direction, I would think that would need to be agendized as a new agenda, agenda item.
Right. I mean, I've encountered this once in, in roughly eight years where a report was not actually accepted, and it was actually requested to be brought back later in a different, you know, kind of format with additional information. So, I mean, I, personally, I have precedence on this. This wasn't on this governing body, though. It was in one of the assignments. So what are your thoughts on that possibility? I know that the report is written, but the city manager has indicated that that might essentially, you know, entail more, more consultant fees, I guess.
I would defer that to Director Morley.
Okay, yeah, and you had indicated that previously, so let's go ahead and move that over back to Matt. So Matt, any thoughts on the discussion on this item thus far?
Yeah, so our intent on this item was to bring it to you as a check-in, to tell you that we're continuing to progress on this, that we have some, some good data that shows that, that will comply with our dark sky requirements, that we'll have a cost-effective project when we get through design, and that we're gonna, that we, our intent is to move forward. I'd like to, from a sense of realizing the dollar savings in a timely manner, I'd like to continue on in that, in that fashion. If the council would like to see another report prior to us completing design or at the completion of design, that would be a great way to have a, a next check-in on the, on the project and to answer some of the questions that, that might be outstanding.
And did you, do you have a consultant that wrote the report here tonight?
No, we do not.
No, okay. And I see Susan has her camera on. Susan, did you want to speak to any of this? Since, I'm assuming that there's some kind of interconnectivity between yourself and this report, I mean, any?
Yes, it's a CIP project. Thank you, Mayor. Susan Michael, CIP manager, thank you for the questions. I wanted, I would reiterate in a way what Matt has said, that this is a report that we're bringing to council and also in response to council's request for information last year when we brought forward the new CIP project. There is a new CIP project for the, this fiscal year that is the implementation of this, of the LED report. And this item is not related in that direct fashion to that implementation. This is, here's the report, we'd like to give you the information that we have. Our next stage is to go to the project. And similar to what Councilmember Moore has said, when I've gone through the report, I'd like to have someone who knows more about lumens outputs and the technical aspects of the report to look at the report and make a evaluation. So that will be part of the process, the design process, before we go into construction. So we're happy to give better information on that as we proceed with the project, but this is simply to receive the report.
Okay, and what about the request for essentially, I think, what seems to be a fairly modern, minor modification of the report to include pictures of the, you know, various options here? I mean, that's how I read it. That's how I was hearing what Councilmember Moore was indicating, you know, because if you look at the report itself, it's very textual, right? I mean, there are only a couple of illustrations. There are a couple of images at the very beginning, but you don't necessarily get, you know, that, that kind of, you know, sense of it. Without the consultant here, we don't really, you know, necessarily have that, that direct expertise. But did you want to speak to that before I open this up to members of the public? Because I'm assuming that we don't really have a presentation on this, and so, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that. Yeah, okay. No worries, you know, we can get through this process. And so I do see one member of the public with a hand raised. Jennifer, welcome. You'll have up to three minutes on this if you wanted to speak on, on the item. And a reminder to the rest of the public, please have your hand raised or a blue card filled out or an email to cityclerk@cuppertino.org before Jennifer is done speaking. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. You know, this, this is like the fourth time we've changed the streetlights since I've been in the area. And I, you know, I really, I don't really like the ones we have now. The light is very, very harsh. It's a bright white, and I've never, I, I, I don't know, I think I liked the one that was two times back. But I would be interested in seeing, like you said, if there was an example around the city of these streetlights. What color is this light? Is it gonna be pink, yellow, bluish, white? I attended Bianca back in the years ago when we had the pink lights, the sodium lights. And, you know, that campus, you could walk around 11 o'clock at night. I remember I dropped off a chemistry lab book and one of my professors slid it under the door. And that campus was so light at night, you could walk around in the middle of the night, and, and it was like daylight. So whether that's good or bad, that's probably very bad. But I will tell you, those sodium lights were a lot easier on your eyes. These current streetlights that we have now are so harsh at night. And they're not, that's why I think it's important that we, we have something to look at going around this, this city at night to see what these things are. Because, I mean, I can see two right now, and they are just incredibly, they're, it's like you see the moon. They're not shielded in any way, and I really hope that we have something that's a little bit softer. I like the ones that were two times ago, so I'll just throw that out there. If you have examples around the city, it would be nice to see them at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And so let's go ahead and bring this back, assuming, and I won't assume. Madam City Clerk, were there any other cards or any emails that came in?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So order of comments here, Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Way, and Councilmember Moore. Comments and or follow-on questions? And Vice Mayor Chow?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I wonder if the report estimate the impact on the wildlife? Because that was intent of the dark sky ordinance. I believe Audubon Society and others who care about wildlife has concerns about straight LED light. This is just one example of comments that people had. LED streetlights have significantly less wildlife, including insects and mammals. You can Google this. There is a lot of information like that. So I wonder what other options are considered and whether impact to wildlife is considered. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And also question is, by accepting the report, are we accepting that we only replace, consider LED? Or this is just one report, we will talk about options later? That's my question, yeah.
Okay, thank you Vice Mayor Chow. And Director Morley or, or City Manager or, or City Attorney, did any of you want to respond to that?
I'll start off for us on this one. So the, the alternative for, for replacing streetlights and the industry standard now is moving to LED. Many neighboring communities have done that in recent years, including, for, for example, Los Gatos, where there is significant concern with wildlife up against the foothills. So it's, it's been done successfully. I, I understand that there's sensitivity to the light. There's an adjustment to the, to the, to the appearance of the color of the light, and those are things that we should consider as we're moving forward and be cognizant of the, of the locations that we're installing revisions to our streetlight plan. I think ultimately it's, it's a question, it's a sort of a policy for the council on moving forward with something like this in terms of improving the, the ultimate quality of the fixture and any, any perceived trade-offs that there might be in, in terms of, of other aspects.
Okay, thank you Director Morley. And let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so the, the city has, in my opinion, quite a variety of, of streetlights. Even in my own neighborhood, we have some, we have one that's actually an LED which is, has somewhat of a pink tone to it. And then the rest are cold, cold light. And the, the sodium vapor that was mentioned, those ones are actually, I believe, within the color temperature that the, the dark skies ordinance was, was looking for, which is around 1,700. My concern also with this, Table 1 of the report is that you could end up with a situation, because residential is showing 3,000, you could end up with a situation where you're actually making something brighter than what was there, that's harsher. And, and I do think that it's, it's challenging because we have, we have dark areas as well. And one of the things they were trying to reduce was the, the harshness or abruptness of going from one streetlight that, and then the next one is very far down the street, and then you, you hit the next one. So it's like, you're going from bright to dark to bright to dark. We were trying to have that effect just moderated so it wouldn't be so harsh. Now, with regards to this report, I, I do see that it, it mentions having a dimmable driver, but I don't know what the, what the effect of that would be for color temperature-wise. So I'm concerned about that because they're saying all light sources shall have a maintained correlated color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or less. So that's not following our dark skies ordinance. And anyway, like I said before, I'd like to hear from Audubon because they had really done a lot of research on this and, and provided some really good advice. So, okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Moore. Let's go on to Councilmember Way.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I want to ask a clarification question. This is a report that we're gonna accept and, you know, understand a lot of it, but the actions are kind of still in the making. So the recommendations 1, 2, and 3, are the staff recommending we're doing all 1, 2, 3 so we can get more details of everything that's being asked? Because I can see this as a report, the implementation will be much different. We can still have a lot of flexibilities when we're doing implementations, getting public input, getting Audubon Society to come and comment on it and make, the real project is still in the making. Am I make, is that, do I understand it correctly?
You are correct on that, Councilmember, and I think the next steps outline sort of what we had planned for going through a design process, and that design process would come back. It sounds like there's an interest in, in having some additional outreach associated with this and potentially seeing some installations either that are already installed in the neighborhood or something that we can do a mock-up on or, or an actual installation so we can direct you to it to allow you to see what, what, what the actual infield experience is. And that's something that we can, that we can bring back to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, let's go ahead and entertain a motion, and before we do that, I would like to put in a request for a little bit more background information in the report as to what has been done, let's say, within the last 10 years with regard to our streetlights, because I forget who made the comment, it might have been Councilmember Willie, saying that there have been some turnovers with regard to our streetlight, you know, system. And I thought, you know, a number of years ago, we had actually replaced with LEDs. So I'd be interested in knowing, you know, with regard to that, on top of what other people have suggested, to make the report kind of more complete in their own eyes, you know, what the back, what kind of baseline we're starting out with? Because I'm a little bit, you know, wondering what has been specifically done by Cupertino in the past. And then, you know, I think they make a pretty good point with regard to the fact that it might be brighter. If we're considering a re, you know, design of our streetlight strategy, as well as, you know, gathering more information on what lights are out there, because that's part of the report as well, maybe we can be considering in the report the fact that we have alternatives such as, you know, shading and directing the light, you know, more downward to, you know, perhaps save a little bit in terms of the coverage and the ways in which it would affect people as they're kind of moving along. So I do see, you know, Chad Mosley with his hand raised, did you want to speak to that comment, Chad? Or, you know, and forgive me if I'm not going through the right channel of command or anything like that, I'd be happy to go through Director Marley first in order to, you know, kind of speak to that, but either way, I mean, any comments? Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, just briefly, on the streetlights, we did replace the streetlights about a decade ago.
Yes.
Streetlight fixtures, especially the induction lights, have about a decade lifespan, and we've seen an increase in the need to replace those fixtures. So as we're going along, we think it's important to consider, you know, moving into the future, and the future for streetlights tends to be LEDs, and you're seeing that across a lot of places. It conserves energy, and typically you can create color temperatures that meet requirements, such in this case, you'll see that the report has been prepared around a color temperature of 3,000 K or less, which matches our dark sky ordinance. And additionally, there is a table in the report that talks about the lumens that are being recommended, which they believe are necessary to provide adequate safety lighting within the streets. Those lumen levels for the LEDs are either match or less than the current induction lighting. So this report does have a reduced amount of lumens than what is currently out there for streetlights, and the color temperature being recommended does comply with our dark sky ordinance.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess I'm not talking about as long as 10 years ago. There were at least some iterations, or at least one iteration possibly, of LED changes within the city.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, PG&E went through a number of years ago and replaced all the fixtures that they owned with LED fixtures. So if you see fixtures out there, they're either, they're typically gonna be on PG or joint poles, like the wooden poles, or we have a handful of PG&E-owned metal fixtures as well. So that LED transition for some lights was PG&E's modification.
Okay, okay. And the city's poles, we didn't actually do any replacements of LEDs? I thought we had in some limited places, perhaps?
We've replaced light fixtures within parking lots with some LEDs, and we have replaced a handful of other induction lights with LEDs throughout the city. This has all been kind of in this, you know, transition of trying to, you know, what is gonna work? Are these LEDs gonna be appropriate for our uses? And this report is indicating that they can be.
Yeah, I mean, and that does jog some memory. I would just like more detail on that. I mean, did we approve a program where the induction lights, when they expired, were being replaced by the LEDs? And if that's the case, you know, is this perhaps suggesting an expansion upon that program? Was it, you know, just in particular parks, you know, like Wilson or Library Field or something like that? Yeah, I mean, I know this topic has been broached before, and I'm not gonna step on any kind of third rails here, but, you know, inventorying of our streetlights is actually interrelated to other topics as well. So that's kind of getting my mind moving a little bit as to, you know, what other types of, you know, kind of uses this might be, you know, implicating. So, anyway, those are my comments. I'll take it back to Councilmember Moore, but I would like to ask for a motion at this point, you know, if, whether we're asking for a modified report with more of the information that we're requesting, or whether we're okay with proceeding with the staff recommended action.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Going back to the submittal requirements, so in their report, they, it's PDF 223 of 300, they reference the municipal code and the standards, and they say they apply generally to private development, however, not necessarily to street lighting in the public right-of-way. However, Tanco Lighting found the following requirements to be applicable to streetlights. And so then they provide their own submittal requirements. And where I get a little concerned is we do have, while I see this color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or less, we do mention in our municipal code for security lighting that that would be 1,600. So I would want, I still actually would like to hear Audubon weigh in on that. And I'm concerned about the recommended spacing area where they're talking about light uniformity and coverage are the key principles when it comes to determining exact pole spacing. Okay, so, you know, I've worked with people who do the photometric plans, and the idea with those, with that spacing is that you don't have any missed coverage, so that your streetlights are spaced so close together that you don't have a dark area, and then it gets bright again, that you're overlapping, and they'll actually calculate how bright the light needs to be, how high it is, and what the spread of the light is on. And so I'm concerned here, when I look at this recommended spacing, and they say in general, streetlights should be spaced approximately 150 to 200 feet apart from each other, as stated in the submittal requirements, only for new streetlight installations, a photometric plan prepared by a professional engineer or someone qualified is recommended to determine the exact spacing. So I'm kind of wondering what our guidance is? Are we saying that we're trying to move towards, in the city, streetlights that are spaced 150 to 200 feet apart with this more uniform lighting? Because some places, they don't want to have more, they don't want to have more light. So I don't know, you know, where in this process is the best time to have this discussion, but it looks like this is how they're going to be submitting their projects. It says submittal requirements, and so if somebody wants to jump in, and, you know, where do we get to hear from the Audubon Society about this? And with the spacing, like what is our plan? Because I was thinking that we weren't going to be moving towards closer spaced lights. And I'm, not knowing how bright these actually are in the proposal, I'm reluctant to make a motion on this at this time, but it's the will of the council.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm gonna move that we bring the report back to staff with a request for modifications based upon the input and requests for outreach discussed by council this evening. So would anyone like to second that motion? I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised, and so Councilmember Willie, so we have a motion and a second on the table, realizing that it may empower some, you know, added costs based on the consultant, but I think there are some good points that have been raised here with regard to the information and outreach. So we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, would you like to take a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, I actually have a request. If you could repeat that with the microphone on, Councilmember Wei, so for the record.
Madam City Clerk, could you repeat the motion, please?
I could try to repeat the motion, if I can remember, but...
Yeah, well, depending on how much detail you want, so basically requesting continuation of the report acceptance until follow-up of council member modifications, to provide photos of locations with brightness lumens, receive Audubon Society input, what has been installed and where in the city in the last five years, look at shading, directing, and light options, and what is the plan for spacing between lights? I was just reciting, Mayor, your motion was based upon council input, but...
That's right.
That was my best guess.
And request for outreach.
And request for outreach, Audubon, in general outreach.
Okay, well, thank you for the, I guess, more granular encapsulated, you know, kind of recitation of what was encapsulated by the motion. But Councilmember Wei, will that suffice?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, let's proceed with a roll call vote, thanks.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, well, thanks very much, everyone. I don't want anyone to feel chagrined or, you know, despondent with regard to, you know, the fact that we're through consent calendar. This has been, you know, a group of really interesting items, to tell you the truth. We do have three more items on the calendar. I think it's fairly safe to say with about an hour and 10 minutes left before midnight, we're probably not gonna get to all of them, although I would say maybe we could create an omnibus for items 18 and 19. Those seem, you know, fairly boilerplate. But what I will say is that 10:49, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 10:55 to hopefully get through at least two out of three of the remaining items. We do have a rather large item, I think, with item number 20, the last enumerated item on our agenda. So let's reconvene at 10:55. Thanks, we'll see you then. Hey, we're back, and I'd like to make a request to my colleagues and the public. Let's go ahead and consider item 19 first, since that is one that is time-sensitive, and I would imagine wouldn't take too long. We have it estimated as being a very brief consideration. And so I'd like to put forward a motion to consider item 19 before we consider item 18, which is scheduled as the next item. And so would anyone be willing to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Moore seconds, I move, and I don't see any members of the public to speak on the item, the motion, rather, and Vice Mayor Chow has a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to the motion?
I wonder for item number, item number 20, are there members of the public who are waiting for, to speak on that item? Should we consider that before item 18, which could wait?
Okay, I am open to amending the motion, but maybe we can go to staff with regard to item 18. Is 18 time-sensitive at this point with regard to the grant funding?
Yes, it is.
It is time-sensitive?
And if I can make a proposal, item 20 is not time-sensitive. If council wants to continue this to the next meeting, we have a relatively light agenda for October 4th. We can do that.
Okay, well, let's do this. Are there any members of the public that are here to speak on item 20? If you could raise your hand. I do see one person with a hand raised. And so if people would be willing to entertain that as part of the motion, now we have two people with their hand raised, if people would be willing to, my colleagues would be willing to entertain that, I'd be happy to amend the motion to continue item 20 in addition to putting 19 before 18 to October 4th. And so Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to accept that as the second of the motion?
Actually, we've, the members of the public have waited until 11 o'clock to speak. I'm actually more inclined to want to take 20 first and not keep them waiting and have to wait to an entirely new meeting. What do you think about that?
Well, I think given the late hour, it's probably a better idea to, of course, there are only two members of the public here, so why don't we do this? Why don't we try to take 19? Then 18 is time-sensitive. I'll encourage everyone to be brief in their commentary and dialogue, especially if, you know, essentially it doesn't really change the outcome of their disposition, and then visit item 20 and the potential continuation at the time that we're done with 18, assuming that this motion passes. So Vice Mayor Chow, as the movement, I'm not willing to move 20 right after 19 and before 18. You are free to make a substitute motion, if you like, at this time, and your hand is still raised, so Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, at this late hour, it's possible. Some other people who would like to speak have not, have left, so maybe if we continue the item to October 4th, the public may have more chance to speak, so I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm okay with continuing to, for us also.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I share Councilman Moore's concern about the community have waited this long. I'd be, I think, kind of a, a little bit of an incentive for them that we then make this our first agenda item on the 4th of October, so they're not gonna be left, you know, wait and see where they fall in the schedule, again, that we tell them this will be the first item on the 4th, so that, you know, they can...
Okay, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we just move it to a special meeting at 5:30 on the 4th? And so that would be our sole agenda item. We're estimating this item number 20 to take an hour, and so we would just put it at 5:30 to accommodate this, you know, sentiment that let's put it in early for the people that have waited, and yeah, certainly there are quite possibly people that have dropped off here. So let me look at my council, Vice Mayor Chow, you were making a noise of some kind, but let me, actually, let me check in with the city manager first as to the practicality of that. Is there something teed up for a special meeting, Pamela, on the 4th of October?
Not at this point, but we haven't polled each council member's availability to see if all of you are available at 5:30.
I'm assuming we are, because we normally are at 5:30. Vice Mayor Chow, was that your indicator of questioning the availability of yourself on October 4th?
I have other comment.
You have a different comment? Okay, why don't you make that comment?
For the public, most people can, really can make 5:30 for people who work. So I think the first agenda item of the meeting would be great, but if possible, for the people who stayed this late, I wonder if we can briefly hear their comments and then continue the item through October 4th, so that at least we can speak their minutes. And so let's do item 20 first, hear comments, and then continue, and then do 19 and 18 and 19.
Well, I'm not sure if that's really feasible, given the length of the staff report. How long is the staff report anticipated for, for item number 20?
It's a good five or 10 minutes, but...
But we could skip this presentation today, as Vice Mayor suggested, open public hearing to take public comments, and council can continue it to the next meeting. So, and we can bring back.
That, that definitely disconfits me, because I would prefer to have some context before we take public comment. I'm not sure if that's, you know, something that is, you know, met with agreement by other people on the dais. But for my part, I'd like to have a little bit of, you know, kind of background before we introduce to the more general public. And five, 10 minutes is not that long, frankly. So, so I'd be amenable to it, but I mean, knowing that there are a couple of time-sensitive items. Well, let's do this, let me ask our members of the public. I see there, there is a hand raised. If you're here for 18 or 19, can you please raise your hand from the public? And Carol Stanek, okay, so I'm, I'm assuming as part of our Parks and Rec Commission, Carol's probably here for item number 18, I would assume, so. Okay, um, yeah, let's just, let's just do 19, 18, and 20 is, is my, you know, recommendation. And we'll, you know, I hope there's time to do a five-minute presentation for number 20. And then, you know, we can, we can go ahead and maybe, you know, expedite this process along. So that's the motion that's on the table. Let's take a roll call vote on that.
Uh, Mayor, I apologize, so.
To take 19 before 18.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And so item number 19 is the consideration of amending the City of Cupertino Conflict of Interest Code for officials and designated employees per state law requirement on a biennial basis, the 2022 local agency biennial notice. And Madam City Clerk, you are the presenter, did you want to give a brief summary of this item?
Yes, Mayor, I have a two-and-a-half-minute presentation, just to share quickly. I believe you can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, so a conflict of interest code tells public officials, oops, tells public officials and employees what to disclose on their Form 700 Statement of Economic Interest. And the amount of disclosure depends on their duties. Per state law, we, cities must establish a list of positions that are involved in making or influencing this agency decisions in which the official may have a private financial interest. They also ensure disclosure of all potential conflict situations, narrowly tailor the disclosure requirements, and make amendments when necessary. The city manager reports whether the amendments are needed, and the council is the reviewing body for code submittal and directs review and adoption. An amendment to the city's conflict of interest code is necessary this year. The draft resolution proposes clarifying amendments to the code by adding the Economic Development Committee, which was recently codified, and adding and deleting positions to accurately reflect the current structure of the organization. The information required to be in a code may change over time, thus agencies must review their codes biannually and amend when necessary. The amendments must be submitted to council by October 3rd. The draft biennial notice verifies review and the changes and is consistent with state regulations. So the action proposed before you this evening is to adopt Resolution 22-120, rescinding the previous 2020 code and to authorize the city manager to sign the required 2022 local agency biennial notice.
Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And I'll bring this to members of the public. If anyone would like to comment on this item number 19, please raise your hand now. And Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or emails that you've gotten?
No, Mayor.
With regard to this item? All right, so let's start with Councilmember Moore, who has a hand raised on item number 19.
I move that we accept, well, that we do the recommended action for item 19. I think we all had time to read the, read the staff report, and I think we can move on with this one.
Uh, great, thanks, Councilmember Moore. And would anyone like to second? Councilmember Way?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. And I want to thank our, our city staff and, you know, the city clerk, city manager, for making sure that we have, you know, a good expansion, actually. So just very briefly, the Economic Development Committee had no charter, had no written charter whatsoever. And so i- it's good to get this written down in a very important role in our city. So it's, it's nice to be able to see that expansion of the reporting requirements. Very much looking forward to that. So, okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on this item number 19.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And so we're on to item number 18. This is the update on the status of the research from the City Council Subcommittee meetings for the Cupertino Community Funding Grant Program. And the presenter, if I may, Madam City Manager, go over, and thank you very much for that assent. The acting director of the Parks and Recreation Department, or the Recreation and Community Services Department, Rochelle Sander, welcome Rochelle.
Thank you, I'm actually going to go ahead and pass the presentation on to Jacinda Liang, who's our management analyst.
Okay, thank you Rochelle, and welcome Jacinda.
Thank you, so I'll get ready to share my screen now. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Jacinda from the Parks and Recreation Department. And tonight I'll be providing an update on the Cupertino Community Funding Grant Program. So I'll be covering the background of the Community Funding Grant Program, the grant program process, historical funding awards, direction from the council subcommittee, grant eligibility criteria, guiding principles from the general plan, and the possible next steps. So through the Community Funding Grant Program, the city has been awarding funding to local nonprofit organizations in areas of social services, fine arts, and other programs for the general public since 2013. And in the past, city council has determined the organizations to be awarded the funds through the program. And on June 5th, 2018, city council directed city staff to update the policy and process in which the community funding updates were first shared with the Parks and Recreation Commission before presenting recommendations from the commission to city council. And the current Community Funding Grant Program process consists of a January to February application period. And the Community Funding Grant Policy established a range of 70,000 to 19, 70,000 to 90,000 in total available funding per year, with awards not exceeding 20,000 per applicant per year. So the program process, after the February 1st application deadline, city staff reviews the received applications for completeness and compliance eligibility. The applications are then presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission in March and April. And the commissioners then evaluate and discuss the applications and then make a recommendation to city council. In May, city council considers the community funding grant requests at the budget study session and then make a final decision on the grant amounts for each applicant as part of the budget adoption process, which usually happens in June. And after the final budget is adopted, city council, or city staff then coordinates the funding agreements with the awarded organizations. On July 15th of the following year, the grant recipients then submit a written report to city to show that the grant funds have been spent in ways that are stated on their submitted application. Historical funding, so in the last funding cycle fiscal year 2223, $69,461 was approved for the Community Funding Grant Program. And this chart depicts the city's previously awarded fundings through the program since 2018. So it's 52,400 in 1819, and then the year after that is 109,800. The year after that, 110,000, and then the previous year before this one is 115,900. At the June 4th, 2021 council, city council special meeting, council voted to form a council subcommittee comprised of Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore to review the Community Funding Grant Program evaluation process and procedures for the upcoming funding cycle in the next calendar year. And on March 9th, city staff met with the council subcommittee and was given guidance to research specific items and bring an update to city council. So staff has prepared a historical funding report on the allocation of program funds and compiled a comparative analysis of other community funding programs within Santa Clara County, reviewed the general plan guiding principles, and categorized the most recently awarded recipients and provided clarification on additional eligibility and evaluation criteria. And these were all provided as attachments along with the staff report. This slide shows the most recent fiscal, the most recent two fiscal years of funding awarded. And based on council subcommittee direction, the awards were broken down into categories, art, education, events, health, and site improvements. To receive funding through the Community Funding Grant Process, applicants need to currently meet the following eligibility criteria from the policy. First one is be made or sponsored by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And then identify how the funds will benefit the Cupertino community in the application. Be awarded only once per project. And the funds must be used for specific needs and not ongoing operational costs. And have more than 75% of the requested funds set aside for direct service costs as opposed to administrative costs. And the application must be complete and submitted by the application deadline. Also, based on the council subcommittee direction, an option for eligibility criteria may be to require applicants submit programs or projects and events that fall under at least one of the general plan guiding principles. And by doing so, it could make the policy clearer to remove the most confusing eligibility criteria, which is be awarded only once per project. And the next steps, if council approves to continue allocating funding to the Cupertino Community Funding Grant Program, this will be included in the approved funding in the annual budget for fiscal year 2324. And moving forward upon city council direction, city staff will update the Community Funding Grant Policy in addition to eligibility requirements, evaluation criteria, and then update information on the city webpage. And this concludes the update. If there are any questions, Rochelle and I are available to provide any additional information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jacinda. And we'll go ahead and move to any members of the public that'd like to speak on this item number 18. And I don't see any hands raised at this time. Madam City Clerk, are there any emails or blue cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I have one email from Carol Stanek.
Okay, let's go ahead and utilize Carol as the first speaker on this. By the time that the city clerk has read up to three minutes of Carol's email into the record, please have your hand raised on Zoom, blue card filled out, or an email sent to City Clerk, one word at Cupertino.org in order to be recognized as a public speaker for this item. Madam City Clerk?
Dear Mayor and councilmembers, I am Carol Stanek, a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, speaking for myself tonight. As a commissioner, I have participated in the evaluation process for multiple cycles. So my experience here is up close and personal. I will say that I found the commissioners to be very respectful of the process, following the evaluation criteria and weighing the guidelines. Unfortunately, I, it seems that the commission could not anticipate council's questions or priorities. Council sometimes granted substantially more, sometimes substantially less, or identified different recipients than recommended by the commission. While this is entirely council's prerogative, it has led to much frustration on the part of the applicants. The applicants took great efforts to present to the commission and answer questions posed by the commissioners, but they did not get this opportunity with council. It is difficult, if not impossible, for the commission to know the desires of the council when there seems to be many subjective aspects of this funding. Given council's desires to be actively involved in the grant process, I recommend that Parks and, that the Parks and Recreation Commission be removed from the process so that council can have direct input and interaction with the applicants. Having council participate in the ratings prescribed by the process will improve the consistency of the final grants. I believe this change will improve council's and the applicant's satisfaction with the process and funding. It will also streamline the process by eliminating the duplication of work for staff for multiple presentations. If council continues to delegate the evaluation to this Parks and Recreation Commission, I hope you will further define your requirements so that the commission effort and recommendation will more closely align with your priorities. Thank you.
Interesting, well, thank you very much, Carol, as well as Madam City Clerk, for reading that into the record. I don't see any further hands raised in Zoom. And so I'll go ahead and bring this back to council. I also don't see hands raised from council, but Councilmember Moore, you now have a hand raised.
Yes, so thank you so much, Jacinda and Rochelle for the report. This is, and collecting all the additional information, this is really helpful. I'm, there was one comment about the be awarded only once per project, that that needs to have some clarification. I'm definitely concerned hearing from a Parks and Rec Commissioner that there's, that the process is problematic. And I, working on this, on the subcommittee, I can certainly see how that would be. And I really genuinely appreciate all the work that the Parks and Rec Commission has been doing to hone the process. And I can tell that it's improved from the year before and that they're, that they've really put, put a great effort forward. And I think the, the metrics, the, the, essentially, kind of the scoring system has, has not been streamlined to a way that it's, that, that it's, it's just not perfect. I'll just put it like that. So I was wondering, well, what, what are you hoping? So we're supposed to get, get the update and provide some direction to, to you? And kind of wondering what you're hoping for at this point? Because I'd almost say, let's talk about what some of the, what some of the problems are. I love this chart showing what the other cities are doing. I think that's really, really a good starting point. But I'd almost say I would send the subcommittee back to talk to some members of Parks and Rec. If we can, say, go meet with the chair and the vice chair and have a, have a sit-down talk with, with staff, perhaps, and, and try to work out, you know, how we can perhaps integrate some of what we're seeing with the other cities and then come back again with some recommendations. But I heard time-sensitive on this one, so I don't know how much time we have on that. So those are, those are my, my questions and comments for now, and I'll probably make some more in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And, you know, the way I read the recommended action is to provide direction as to next steps. And so, you know, personally, I think that's a fairly legitimate next step and, and quite a sensible one, frankly. So let's go to Councilmember Way with a hand raised, followed by Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie, and then I'll make some brief comments.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I want to follow up with Councilmember Moore's comments, because I really like her comments. I do have a question on that once per project, too, because if it's a really good project and the same organization would like to do it and the city would like to support it, I thought we could have some flexibility on it. So that could be revisited. The second one is, going through the process, I did, I remember I made that comment. The Park and Recreation went through the process and applicants made the presentations to the Park and Recreation. And we actually took off maybe two or three that the Park and Recreation recommended without listening to the whole presentation. So I did see that gap. I can see what Carol was mentioning, because we made decisions without really having the presentation. So I think that could be somewhere we could be improved. And also to minimize staff time, so maybe it is good to have, if the council wants to make that decision, maybe the council should take the whole presentation and really hear from the applicants, or the Park and Recreation can do it. I, I don't know, the process, I think, as Carol said. The process, I think, as Carol says, needs to be a little bit of, uh, streamlined. And, uh, maybe, and, and also with the mind of minimizing our staff time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember White. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, thank you. I really appreciate all the work Parks and Rec Commission put in. Um, it's great that, I wonder if all the applicant makes a presentation or they, or is that optional? Do they all make a presentation or they just speak during the three minute oral comment?
So I, I, I do see that, uh, Carol Stanek from the Parks and Rec Commission has a hand raised. If staff is, uh, you know, good with deferring that since, uh, there's a good amount of institutional knowledge represented in Carol. So Carol, uh, did you want to speak to Vice Mayor Chow's question?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Um, yes, there is a, a separate meeting that the commission has that invites all of the applicants to come and make a presentation. So it is really up to the applicant in general. Every one of them, um, comes unless there's an exception. And, and the ones that have not presented have generally not been given any, um, much consideration. Uh, I don't think they've been given grants. Um, but there, there is not only a presentation, but there is a back and forth with questions and answers directly to the applicants. And so they, they put a lot of effort into that meeting to present to the commission expecting that our recommendation will really hold weight with the council.
Uh huh. Hmm. Thank you. Um, so, yeah, I'm also very, I think the problem is the guideline. I, I respect that the commission is trying to respect and follow the guideline. However, I think the incidences when the council did not fund those were the instant incidences that I feel it didn't really follow the guideline. So I thought it wasn't fair for the people who did not apply because they thought they didn't follow the guideline. One example is Yangzi. I know that organization. I really like what they do. However, their application initially was applying for a grant to prepare curriculum for a summer camp. That's a paid summer camp. That does not seem to follow the guideline. And then they, I heard that they changed it in the middle to say, oh, they'll get funding for underprivileged students. But that still does not make that event open to all, which I thought is the requirement. Um, so I am, because actually in the past, I have proposed the, maybe the city should consider providing grants for underprivileged students to attend summer camps because they cannot afford. So if we would like to support that, I believe that should be a separate grant category. So everyone who would like to take advantage of that could apply, rather than someone coming up with their own category and then apply. And then somehow we give a special exception because they applied. Another incident was the high school club who applied.
Vice Mayor.
Previous year.
Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm just going to interject since, uh, uh, of the timing. Uh, let's put you on another minute to wrap and I'll let you know when that elapses.
Okay.
Yeah.
So another incident is high school club. That if we do, if we want to allow that, that should be made equally available for how all high school clubs to apply. And another incident, uh, that I think we had the disagreement on is, uh, should we fund, give funding to a public agency like CUSD who has hundreds of millions of dollars of budget? Should we give funding to Fremont Union, uh, School Foundation whose purpose specifically is fundraising, not really providing programs? So I guess I am also confused about the guideline that maybe we need to clarify those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And next we have Councilmember Willie and I'll just put, let's say, two minutes and 30 seconds. All right. Thanks.
So, uh, thank you, Carol. Um, I think your comments are, are very meaningful to me. Uh, I truly believe in the importance of the commissions. And historically on items, when they come to the council, they come without the, uh, findings of the commissions. And while in this case, my memory is, is that we do see some of the, uh, recommendations from the commission. But I, my memory is, I remember going through the applications and then reading what the applicants said their purpose and goals were, which some spoke to me and some didn't speak to me. And then we're faced with allocating the available funds. And so in that regard, I would tend to think that if the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission was to do more of a explanatory, um, uh, presentation for us so that on their recommendations, we could better understand their findings when the applicant actually did a presentation to them that we didn't see. Then I think we'd be better able to follow the commission recommendations. And so I, I have struggled with that, reading the applicant's application and then trying to decide how to best spend our community's dollars. And so this really goes, I think, back to the city manager and staff. How can we better, um, capture the commission's, uh, purposes on their recommendations, rather than it being more about a staff PowerPoint and then we're supposed to allocate the money? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, no, I, I, I have two thoughts on this. Mainly I'll just be really brief about it. You, you, you know, I, I also really respect the work that the commissions do. Um, I, I came from the Parks and Recreation Commission before I was elected to the city councils. And so, um, you know, I, I, I think I understand, um, the sentiment of, of Carol and perhaps her colleagues on the Parks and Recreation Commission. At the same time, you know, in, you know, to, um, to, to make no, you know, point at all about it, be it dull or, or, or fine, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's an advisory role at the end of the day. And as Vice Mayor Chow was indicating, there could well be, you know, good faith reasons for, you know, uh, deviating from, uh, the, uh, advice of the advisory committee or commission. So, um, you, you know, and, uh, you know, Carol and I have actually had this conversation back and forth over the course of years, uh, ever since the grant funding program was, was formalized, uh, which I think was a really good thing because we used to just kind of do it in a rather ad hoc manner. Um, so, uh, my other thought on this is that, uh, before Councilmember Moore made her comment with regard to having, um, the subcommittee get together with perhaps the chair and the vice chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which I think is actually a fantastic idea. Um, probably, um, a good precursor to what I was thinking, which was that maybe we, we actually just designate the subcommittee as being part of the process itself, um, to, um, be in with the, um, the, the Parks and Recreation Commission as they're going through their process so that we actually have a more, uh, direct connection, um, within that process. So, um, I, I, I don't know whether that would be well received by the members of the subcommittee or the council, uh, because of course that would entail, you know, probably a fairly significant amount of, of time and that kind of a commitment. So, um, yeah, I, I would, I would actually really support the notion of asking the subcommittee to, uh, interface with a couple of members or perhaps even the, um, Parks and Recreation Commission itself in a notice meeting, um, as an agenda item, you know, perhaps in the next Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission meeting to talk about, you know, what, what can be done to refine the, um, the process here to, uh, give more of a sense of, uh, comfiture, I guess, if you will, um, as to the integrity of the process. Although having sat through every single one of these, um, you know, uh, processes for, uh, budgetary allocations for grants, um, you know, I, 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 I don't really think of any particular decision that was made as being, um, in any way, shape or form arbitrary. I, I, I think there were always reasons and, you know, criteria are criteria because they're not, you know, um, hard and, and bright line rules. So, you know, these are, um, you know, these are, these are subjective judgment calls at the end of the day. So, um, let me go and ask, since we've all had an opportunity to speak, um, the time is a little bit past 11:30 at, at the moment. I, I would like to ask for a motion, um, based upon perhaps what we've heard in this kind of first round of comments. Um, and I know that, uh, you can't really rely upon the staff, uh, recommendation because staff recommendation is to provide direction. So, um, I may suggest that we ask the subcommittee to, um, you know, convene with the Parks and Recreation, um, Chair and Vice Chair, uh, to talk about further steps. That's a, that's a potential option. Another potential option is to, um, you know, as I suggested, go ahead and have the subcommittee sit in on the future, you know, um, you know, process for the Parks and Recreation evaluative process. And, uh, yet another, uh, option is to go ahead and, uh, as the, uh, member of the Parks and Recreation Commission has suggested, just, you know, take it, um, as a, as a council process in terms of develop, uh, as, in terms of evaluating the grants. So just some ideas, uh, Councilmember Way, I noticed that you have your hand raised first. Would you like to set forth some kind of a motion for, uh, a potential second and further deliberation or, or vote?
Okay, so I will make a motion that to have the subcommittee go back with the, um, um, to have meetings with, uh, commissioners, uh, Park and Recreation and decide what would be the next process.
Next steps in the process.
Yeah, next stepping process.
Okay. Would anyone like to second that? Um, and I see Councilmember Willie, you have the next hand raised. Would you like to second that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second on the table. Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I was just going to make one, one additional comment after, uh, in reference to the Vice Mayor's comment about, uh, uh, you know, at least one of the applications, you know, describing that it was ongoing, um, operations for which it doesn't qualify. And the, the comment that I would make is that some of the applicants are very small groups. And when I heard, uh, I think Carol said that during or after the, uh, presentation from the applicant to the Parks and Rec, some of them went back and refined their application to better, uh, adhere to the rules. And I just would kind of struggle that some of these smaller ones, they don't come to me, um, instantly in terms of some of them. But, you know, like one of them, it seemed to me it was robotics type situation. But I mean, they were, um, very small groups, maybe even students, and probably unlikely that they would then go back and redo their application and submit it. But if the, uh, uh, commission was to give us their findings and said that during the presentation with the applicant and, uh, discussion on the true, uh, uh, the true criteria for the application, and the applicant said that, yes, they would go ahead and move, you know, the, uh, funds that would have gone toward, uh, maybe an operation or, or an outreach type thing and move it back toward the specific task that they wanted the, the funds for. So I, I'm just trying to say that I, I think that there may be some of that in the mix that they know and we don't know. And then we look at the application and see that it's not really following what we believe to be the, the criteria. And then they get left out.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And next we have Councilmember Chow, Vice Mayor.
I, um, so it seems there are two parts. One is the council should give a direction on how we might want to modify the grant guideline. It seems we need that before the subcommittee go and talk to Parks and Rec Commission, right? Or, or are you just asking the Parks and Rec Commission to propose, uh, possible revision and then bring it back to the council? And so I'm confused on that. And if we, the council is giving some direction, I would like the council to consider potentially creating a separate category for student clubs to apply, uh, so that the student clubs know there is a category for them. And then another potential category for, um, summer camp for underprivileged, privileged students. This part I believe West Valley Community Services are already doing some administration of that. Um, that's a possibility to look into. I'm not sure how, uh, in terms of implementation, how that can be done.
30 seconds.
Yeah. Hmm. And then I think we should clarify. Should we fund a public agency, uh, who has its own budget? Or a fundraising organization who actually was the main purpose is fundraising? Um, does that fit our? Because I think the original intention was to fund events. That's why it says once per project, but we have been diverting from that.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
It's okay. Just we need to clarify.
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Uh, okay, but Councilmember Way had her hand raised before me.
Um, I have you on the Zoom function as having.
As a head?
Yeah, as a head in order. So go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, um, I think we should probably, uh, be looking at the eligibility requirements that are, um, in, in our surrounding cities. Uh, most all are showing that you, you need to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Um, I like what I'm seeing from Sunnyvale. Sunnyvale actually with a larger budget has a much smaller amount that they're, that they grant, uh, for their community grant funding, uh, at $34,000. Um, so they're, they're giving away a lot less. Um, and they do mention that fundraiser events are not eligible for grant funding. I think that that's interesting. Um, and, uh, all of their proposed events must be held within Sunnyvale city limits, be of a citywide nature, serve the greater community, be free and open to the public. Some of these we have. Um, and note, priority may be given to events that demonstrate capacity to serve at least 500 people. Events should encourage celebrations of community which focus on the character, diversity and quality of Sunnyvale and provide vitality and identity to the community.
30 seconds, Councilmember Moore.
Yes. So I, I, we should be steering away from, um, trying to benefit, um, individuals that this is a community grant fu- fund program. Uh, we want to benefit as much of the community as possible and, um, stay away from these, uh, small, small, um, entities that, uh, are not 501(c)(3)'s and are not benefiting, benefiting the, the wider community because that's, that's the purpose of this, to help the, the community at large. I would like to hear some more from staff for, um, if they have some recommendations for us as well for what was, what's been, um, what are thornier areas or too ambiguous and, um, that they'd like us to iron out? Or, or if they have some suggestions for us moving forward, I'd love to hear it.
Okay. Um, let's go ahead and, and, uh, we don't have any further hands raised, but Councilmember Way, did you want to follow up on that since you had your hand raised earlier?
Maybe I'll amend my own motion?
Well, okay. How would you like to amend your motion?
Um, so the motion stands, but with a, um, add staff input. Commission or subcommittee and staff input and bring it back to the council for consideration.
Okay. Um, let me go to your second or, um, was your second or Councilmember Willie, I believe? Are you okay with, uh, adding that to the motion? Okay, so you, uh, assent. So the motion now is to have our subcommittee, uh, interface with our Parks and Recreation Commission and take that staff input as to recommendations and then bring it back to council as to, uh, some specific follow-ups. And so I, I hear what Vice Mayor Chow was saying as to wanting to get some specific criteria prior to this. But I think that given the, given the structure, I, I think we could probably fold that into the, the follow-ups. And so I, I would like to see if we can take a, take a vote on this. I'll, I'll remind everyone, we're at eleven forty-three right now. There was a desire to go ahead and get to item number twenty to get the staff report and perhaps take the member of the public that's still here as to a, as to some comments on twenty before we continue it. So if there is an appetite to take a vote on this motion, we'll have it. If there's not, then this too will be continued to likely the October fourth meeting. So Councilmember Woolley, your hand is still raised. Did you want to make a comment? Or did you want to lower it? You want to make a comment. Okay, Councilmember Woolley.
Yeah. So I appreciate what Councilman Moore said about, you know, wow, Sunnyvale's got it really defined. And, you know, for 501(c)(3) type entity. But I would like to, you know, just expand it a little bit in the sense that, you know, when a group is a 501(c)(3) entity, they're more established. Yes, it's going to serve a, you know, five hundred people or more in the community. But the, the grant money, just like for college, you know, you're giving grants to disadvantaged or people with special things. You're trying to help promote, you know, the, the entities that otherwise wouldn't be moving forward. And I think that's an important consideration. So if we wanted two categories, great. We have one for the established ones and they compete against each other for those dollars. But then we have the seed money, you know, if my memory, I know the Crest Awards, we gave it to the students that did the STEM project for students.
Okay, let's wrap, Councilmember Woolley.
Yeah, that, that would have not fallen under that criteria and they would have been left out. So.
Okay, thank you. I don't see further hands raised. And so let's go ahead and take a vote on this item, on this motion that's on the, on the dais. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's have a-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure that we understand the motion correctly. So the motion is to have subcommittee work with the Parks and Rec Commissioner and staff to come back with a more solidified criteria for the grant funding program.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Any time sensitivity on that, given that we were hoping to get this wrapped up tonight? And knowing that it's going to take a while to get all, everyone together. So you might be looking at about maybe a month or maybe longer.
Yeah, I mean, normally the grant funding program, I think, kicks off, if I'm remembering correctly, in early February. So.
January first.
Okay, January first. Okay, I, I thought it was actually February first, but maybe, maybe that has moved. Okay, so first of the year. And so right now we're at September twentieth. I think that if we could get it back before mid-November, that would be a good, a good, a good target to try to achieve.
I'll work with Director Sandra on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam City Manager. So let's go ahead and hear the staff presentation. I understand it to be about seven minutes long on item number twenty. And item number twenty has to do with a crosswalk affiliated with the Regnar Creek Trail. And I'm not going to go ahead and read the entire, you know, agenda, agenda description. But Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the presenter, or I can just do it directly? David Stillman, Transportation Manager. Welcome, David. Item twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, and members of the City Council. I will share my screen and go through a presentation with you this evening. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right, very good. So tonight I'll be discussing some topics related to pedestrian access to the Regnar Creek Trail and the Campo de Lozano development adjacent to the trail along Rodriguez Avenue. First, a brief history, the Campo de Lozano subdivision, which is on the south side of Rodriguez Avenue, was developed in the early two thousands. As a condition of development, the city required the developer to construct the initial four hundred foot long segment of the Regnar Creek Trail along the project's southern edge, as well as a ten-foot wide pedestrian pathway easement along the western edge. Fast forward to twenty twenty, and the City Council approved the extension of the Regnar Creek Trail to the east and the west that is currently under construction. Now, early this year, anticipating the imminent opening of the extended trail, the Campo de Lozano residents requested that the city vacate the pedestrian pathway easement citing security concerns. The City Council discussed this request at their March first meeting and ultimately directed staff to monitor the trail and pathway usage for a year following the opening of the trail and report back to council with the recommendation on whether the pathway easement should remain. Staff was also directed to return to council sooner with mid-block crosswalk concepts and recommendations and suggestions for pathway signage, and that's the purpose of tonight's presentation. So here's an overview of the site. Just to refresh everybody's memory, here's Rodriguez Avenue. Regnar Creek Trail is along here. This part's under construction. This is the four hundred foot segment that was constructed with this, the Campo de Lozano development. And this is the ten-foot pedestrian pathway easement that connects the trail to Rodriguez Avenue. Shown here are several potential locations for mid-block crosswalks across Rodriguez that I'll go into in a little bit more detail very shortly. So just speaking very generally, mid-block crosswalks are discouraged. Several reasons for this. First, pedestrians like to take the shortest path from point A to point B. And unless the crosswalk is located along that path, they're unlikely to use it. Second, mid-block crosswalks are generally unexpected by drivers and a potential safety problem is created anytime a driver is faced with something unexpected. And third, related to this is the fact that adequate sight distance is very important so that a driver has sufficient time to see a crossing pedestrian, reducing the chance that the driver is surprised and giving him or her adequate time to stop. With respect to the situation at hand, a mid-block crosswalk is not possible directly at the pathway due to the presence of a driveway, fire hydrant, storm drain and inadequate sight distance, which per the California Highway Design Manual has to be two hundred feet at a speed limit of thirty miles an hour. Any crosswalk that is installed would have to be constructed with accessible ramps to meet ADA, high-visibility striping, advanced warning signs and pedestrian-actuated flashing beacons at a cost of about forty thousand dollars. So as I mentioned, there are constraints at the pathway entrance that preclude installing a crosswalk at this location. So here's a photo showing the situation at the pathway. Looking across Rodriguez, you see the driveway across the street, fire hydrant. To this side, there's also some storm drain infrastructure that precludes installing the necessary ADA ramps to put a crosswalk at this location. And in addition, the sight distance is below highway design minimums at this location. So the closest that a crosswalk can be installed to the path is what I'll call Location A. And Location A is about seventy feet west of the pathway at this location. Actually, let me back up. I'm trying to rush through this presentation. I'll slow down a little bit. Concept A at this location is located at the valley water access gate, which is at the point where the trail makes a ninety-degree turn to go down the backside of the city hall and the library parking lot. This is about five hundred and eighty feet from the pathway. So it's not very useful for people that are using the pathway. But there is adequate sight distance at this location for pedestrians that wish to cross there. And, okay, Location B, this is as close as you can get the crosswalk to the pathway. It's about seventy feet west of the pathway. This is the prospective crosswalk location. This is the pathway. Sight distance at this location is about two hundred feet looking to the west and unlimited looking to the east. So we do have the bare minimum sight distance per the Highway Design Manual at this location. Moving to the east, Location C is about seventy feet east of the pathway. And again, there's minimum sight distance at this location, two hundred feet looking to the west and unlimited sight distance looking to the east. And going a little bit further east, if we want to really maximize our, our sight distance, we'll call this C prime, which is a hundred and seventy feet east of the pathway. This is the next closest that you can get from the location that I just mentioned. We've got about over three hundred feet looking to the west at this location and unlimited sight distance looking to the east. This was taken to the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission at their June fifteenth meeting. At the, at the meeting, the commission made a motion to collect data for a year following the trail opening in order to determine a need for a crosswalk at locations B and C, which are the ones immediately to the east and west of the pathway. But they did recommend that a crosswalk be installed prior to the trail opening at Location A, which is the location near the, the valley water gate on Rodriguez. I should note that while staff appreciates the consideration of the bike commission, we are not recommending a crosswalk be installed prior to the trail opening at this time. And finally, at the March first council meeting, council directed staff to return with suggestions for signage to be placed at the pathway that connects the Regnar Creek Trail to Rodriguez Avenue along the Campo de Lozano development. So in response, we have developed the sign that you see in front of you here. This would be placed one at each end of the pathway. Trail rules, three rules that we've noted. One, to be quiet, please respect the neighbors. Second rule, the hours of operation, that being from dawn to dusk. And third rule, a concern we heard a lot of people riding their bicyclists on the pathway, instructions to dismount the bicycle with a little pictorial here to, to further emphasize the point that we want you to walk your bike. So in summary, our recommendation this evening is that staff collect data on the trail usage, walkway usage and the vehicle speeds along Rodriguez for a year following the opening of the trail, which is anticipated currently to occur November of this year. And to evaluate the need for a mid-block crossing or a trail access closure at that time and to return to council with a recommendation and not to install a crosswalk at this time. And that prior to trail opening, signage be installed at the entrances to the pathway with the verbiage that I indicated on the previous slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, David. And I do see a couple of members of the public with their hands raised. And per the motion that we made prior to item number nineteen being heard, we'll go ahead and take these members of the public and their comments before concluding our meeting. They are Christina Yang and John Z. I will just let everyone know that we are coming up against a time constraint. So those will be our comments that we take prior to adjourning this meeting and continuing the item. So I do see a Xin Shi He. And so let's go ahead and take that, that, that comment as well. And so if there are any further hands raised, we'll just have to take those comments at the beginning of our October fourth meeting. So Christina Yang, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the City Council. My name is Christina Alivon Lozano Lane. I continue to request the City Council to approve the original staff report recommendation in February twenty twenty-two to vacate Rodriguez easement. Since the extension of the Regnar Creek Trail will provide an official trailhead to the west side, the easement should be superseded by relocation of the westerly connection points. On March first, the City Council meeting, I think it was widely acknowledged that there's a safety concern of people crossing Rodriguez to enter the future trail. The, the staff report we just heard contains three possible options for the crosswalk and somehow linked the fate of the easement to the establishment of the new crosswalk. I personally do not agree to such linkage, especially if you look at the staff's current top recommendation. Option A, the crosswalk to be established is right in front of the Regnar Trail access point near the city hall. It is only to prove our point all the, you know, all the time that directing traffic, crossing Rodriguez and entering the trail at the official trailhead is the correct way to go. I know in previous meetings, the Walkback Association members have aggressively expressed that they want the easement to be open. While I think the real question here is whether we need the easement. The vacation of the public easement is not unprecedented as it described. In Cupertino, we have had many past resolutions for vacating easement following the staff reports. For example, like, you know, resolution number nineteen dash zero three seven, nineteen dash one four two. Easement in Cupertino has clearly been historically, you know, superseded by relocation, which complies with the law. So why is it extremely hard for Rodriguez easement to be vacated? For the same reason. And Cupertino will continue, you know, developing new parks and trails for its residents. So there will be more new access points built in the future. Would it really make sense to keep all the old easements just because it has been there? I'm quoting Commissioner Eric from Bicycle Pedestrian Committee meeting on June fifteenth, which, by the way, was a very painful discussion to hear. It's a meeting that made me realize that our Lozano Lane residents were not really treated fairly and the easement vacation request is not really being handled with justice and fairness. Eric was extremely biased when commenting on the issue by refusing to acknowledge our HOA's legal right to revisit easement based, based on this new trail extension by simply saying, quote, "The walkway is already there." He referred, you know, all the data collection, monitoring and research of effort as, quote, meaningless. So if our Cupertino residents and developers know that the easement vacation requests are handled, are handled with such difficulty, who in the future will ever grant any easement to the city of the county knowing that they would never be able to vacate it just because it has always been there?
Thank you very much, Christina. And our next speaker is John Z. Welcome, John. John, you'll need to unmute yourself in order to be heard.
Okay, sure. Am I audible now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you very much. Dear Mayor and the council members, thanks for the opportunity for me to comment. I live in Lozano Lane. I totally agree with Christina's point. Specifically to today's meeting topic, here's my comment. Regarding the crosswalk options, Concept A is obviously the best and logical choice because it has the best field of view for both drivers and pedestrians. So it's safer for pedestrians. It's also located right next to a trailhead. So it's convenient for pedestrians too. Concept B is dangerous and will cause accident sooner or later if it's implemented. In fact, it had a traffic accident in the, in the past, just a few yards away from Concept B location, involving a car and a pedestrian. If you come down to the location B, you will know it is a bad, unsafe place to have a crosswalk. Drivers can't see pedestrians crossing until too late. And the drivers normally won't even expect a crosswalk existed in a place like a Concept B location. Concept C is very close to the driver, driveway when we exit Lozano Lane to the Rodriguez. It's not good. Regarding the proposed signage, I have issue with the word trail rules in the proposed signage. The easement is for pedestrian walkway. It should be for pedestrian only. The walkway is not a trailhead. Instead, for proposed trail rules, it should be pedestrian walkway rules or walkway rules. I also have issue with the word dismount bicycle. It should be no bikes and no skateboarding. There are serious safety and liability concerns. The walkway is not safe at all for pedestrians when bicycle appear. City should not heed or encourage bikers to use the- City should not heed or encourage bikers to use the pedestrian walkway. There are trailhead nearby, which is safe for bicycle and pedestrian, and the city should encourage bikers to use those. Thank you very much for considering my feedback and have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And our next and final speaker is Xin Shi. Welcome, Xin Shi.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. And dear council member, my name is Xin Shi. I'm also resident at Campo de Lozano. I have three points I want to make tonight. First point is regarding to the easement and the proposed signage. Campo de Lozano easement states that it is a pedestrian pathway for daytime use only. The proposed signage should not include trail, as it alluded before. It incorrectly implies that this pathway is a part of the Regnar Trail. Disamong bicycle is also not sufficient because nothing except pedestrian use should be allowed. So no bike, no skateboard, no scooter, no whatsoever except pedestrian use. We still request that City Council to vacate this pathway portion of the easement as its original purpose does no longer apply. Closing the pathway will remove safety and liability risks. For example, poor visibility of the traffic, Rodriguez, and also the trail. And there's no ADA access for this easement walkway and and also reduce or remove maintenance cost. If the city of Cupertino decides not to vacate this easement, the city of Cupertino should be responsible for all the liability and maintenance cost of this pathway. The second point is to our City Council members, City staff, and commissioners. We trust you that you are elected to make right decisions on behalf of the Cupertino residents, not for the group with a loud choice. This responsibility requires integrity, wisdom, and unbiased judgment based on facts. We are thankful for the times when you made objective assessments and informed decisions. We are disappointed and ashamed when you are distracted by misinformation or are biased, or even worse, abuse your power for your personal interests. One example is a Cupertino Bicycle Pedestrian Commission meeting on June 15, 2022, in which Commissioner Eric Linscock was clearly biased towards his personal preference, disregarded the comments from Campo de Lozano residents, and refused to have a rational discussion with his fellow commissioners to make a fair decision. Please uphold your integrity, use your best judgment, and make the right decisions of all the good, for the for the good of all Cupertino residents. The third point is to some fellow Cupertino residents who are on opposite side. I just want to say we're your neighbors, not your enemy. We respectfully, respectfully ask you to be respectful and be empathetic. Please don't use aggressive language and extreme rhetoric to portray us negatively. Our society needs no more extremism and bipolar politics. Let's show that rational, constructive, and respective, respectful conversations can happen despite different opinions.
Okay, thank you very much, Xin Shi. And we'll go ahead and bring it back here. We are at the end of our agenda. We do have one item that we didn't get to, but it is past midnight 12:06. So I am going to go ahead and hold that in abeyance unless anyone. And I doubt that there would be a majority willing to continue this until later this week, say, or or next week, just to take this last council and staff future agenda items or comments. And so we'll we'll revisit this item, item number 20, per our motion near the beginning of our October 4th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry, Madam City Manager, did you want to say something at this time?
Yeah, we're having a bit of a scheduling conflict on the 4th. So if you can make a motion to continue to October 18.
Oh, to continue this item? What's the scheduling conflict for the 4th?
We're having staffing availability. So October 4th is is doable, but it's not ideal. If we can, October 18 will be preferred.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make that motion for October 18th to be the continuation of this item. Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would, but a quick question.
Point of order. Yes, this is not a debatable motion.
It's not a debatable motion?
That's correct.
Okay, with regard to the, okay, so we can't deliberate? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So so it's, once it's moved and seconded, it has to go directly to a vote. My apologies, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, are we, did we close public comment, though? Was that completely closed and no one else can speak about this?
No, we have the discretion to open it up again.
Okay, good. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
All right, so Madam City Clerk, if you could take a vote on this motion to continue item 20 to October 18th instead of October 4th.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Can we get the clarity on whether public comment will be open?
Same point of order, Mayor. You can return to that question later.
Okay.
I would like to know that before I vote to on this item. Because that has to do with how I would vote.
I want to be procedurally correct here. So so Chris, what should we do? Should we just withdraw the motion vote or, you know? I guess technically we could ask Councilmember Moore to withdraw her second, and then there's no motion on the table, and then we could address this point very briefly. We're we're in mid-vote, though.
Yeah, I don't know. That's that's that was my concern is I don't know if you can withdraw a motion after you started to vote.
Okay, Vice Mayor, your choices are to vote yea, nay, or to abstain.
So if I would like to make, to be clear, then I need to, can I make another vote, motion after everyone voted to say I want to continue and then with reopen the public hearing on October 18th? So can I make another motion like that?
Not not tonight. You could on the, you could on the 18th.
Because I think the public would appreciate the certainty on whether they could speak or not.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and repeat that. Vice Mayor Chow, if you're uncertain, please feel free to abstain. But we're in the middle of a vote right now, and so procedurally, please provide a yea, nay, or an abstention. And if you don't, we'll just move on from you for the vote.
So could the mayor at least provide certainty that the public hearing would be open?
Okay, I apologize, Vice Mayor Chow, but I'm going to have to mute you and move on in the vote. Madam City Clerk, if you could continue the roll call vote.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries with Chow absent.
Okay, I I don't I don't know if this is permissible, Mr. City Attorney, but I I was intending to reopen the public comment on this continued item, but.
That's that would be at the discretion of the Chair and or council.
Right, I mean, so so so, yes, I I was actually thinking about maybe getting a little bit creative with the agenda and hyperlinking to the presentation so that for the benefit of the public. But but suffice it to say, you know, we we should be able to, you know, satisfy the the concerns here. So, well, thank you very much, everyone. We stand at 12:11. It is, you know, with with great, you know, happiness and honor that I wish you a good rest of your September. And we will see you on October 4th for our regular first meeting of the City Council in October. And so without further ado, meeting is adjourned.